You've got to get your hands on it. Look it out. What the hell? What the hell? I don't know. 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 The whole remaining price remains of all property purposes. Yes, and it's also a proposal. Yes. 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 Yes.[185.11][185.11][S01. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting on November the first, two thousand and twenty-two. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the virtual会议室?
I pledge allegiance to the life of this country, to the citizens of America, to the people who live in this land, to the citizens of this country.
Please be aware, this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and also the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. First item of business is public comment. This is the opportunity for people to make a comment or ask a question of the board or staff for any item they would like to raise that is not on the agenda. So the agenda items, there's always an opportunity for public input. So if there are any issues that someone attended that to raise tonight, we'll go.
Good evening, everyone. Please. Good evening. Doug White, West Ocean Township. I have three comments. Rick, thank you for addressing the concerns of the residents on the buffer. Would you? Good man. Thank you, Rick. Second comment is a suggestion from a township resident. His name is William Ilagali, and he had suggested possible savings with our trash pickup. Currently, just a suggestion that I'm relaying, currently, they have to go through the neighborhoods twice to pick up the trash from one time to one side of the street, the other time to the other side of the street. He suggested to reduce that. We could establish even in odd days where residents would leave their trash cans on even side of the street, and the other day they'd leave them on the odd side of the street. That way, the trash truck can go through the neighborhood once and get everybody. He was just wondering about possible monetary savings the next time we negotiate, or just an improved way of doing things. And then the third request I have is to please restore the long-time tradition we have of displaying the Hanukkah menorah in the lobby along with the Christmas tree during the Eight Days of Hanukkah. That practice was suspended by our prior township manager. An example that could be pointed to is how a lot of Chester County always has our huge Hanukkah celebration in front of the courthouse on public grounds. Of course, the county allows them to do that. So please restore that long-time tradition we had.
It was up next to the top.
The Hanukkah menorah?
It's always been up. It's Casey's guess.
Oh, we had another one? That was, that's the little thing I brought. Maybe we could do the actual menorah?
That's the little thing we had.
Okay, well, there was a time when Casey said no to that, and maybe we could say yes this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else who would like to raise a public question or comment? Very good. We want to agenda item number four, which is a discussion of possible approval of a final amended subdivision land development plan for commercial shopping center, the Stanbury West Ocean LLC at eight twenty-nine Paley Pike. Will you lead us through this, or is there a presentation or anything?
There is no presentation, but I can give you the background, and the applicant and their attorney are both present. So this project is a land development plan for three commercial buildings on the lot that used to house the school district administration building. This plan, the form of this plan had been approved at a prior date for this type of work. This plan itself makes a couple of changes. It revises some wall details, some guide rail details, adds some erosion sedentation controls, and changes some of the sanitary sewer, which was brought up at the pre-construction meeting. The major part of the plan is a subdivision, which I don't totally understand the financial subdivision aspects, so maybe Mr. Colagreco can explain that. But there are also standard subdivisions for a small parcel of ground right up in here that's going to be transferred to the self-storage unit to the left, and also for this large -- it's not working well. It's not working at all. This parcel here can be broken off and possibly conveyed to the township as open space.
Rick, where's the sub- boundary on that parcel? I can't quite make it out of that.
It's right there.
Right there, okay.
The project has been reviewed by a planning commission and has been recommended for approval. So if you have any questions regarding the subdivision, as I said, ask for Mr. Colagreco to answer those for you.
Okay. So I just have the one question around the subdivision of lot A, B, and C on that parcel. I understand that that parcel remains consistently zone. There's no change or requirement for these individual lots to meet the area bulk compliance, et cetera. So just for my own understanding, what is the reason of the creation of these three lots? Mr. Colagreco, can I?
Do you want me to speak up there?
Yeah, can I?
Luke Colagreco, on behalf of the developer. The purpose of the creation of the three lots is, in your zoning ordinance, you have a provision that allows for what we call tract development, that especially for projects like this, and it's not uncommon for shopping centers, you have all of the zoning compliance regulations are based on the entirety of the tract, impervious coverage, your building coverage, your setbacks, many times internally for financing purposes, and sometimes different investors will own different of these lots. In the old days, you can do it one of two ways. You can go through a condominium plan, set up a condominium regime, or you can go through fee simple lots, which is what this is. I think almost every township in Chester County probably has this feature that if the tract itself is compliant, then you can carve up the individual parcels internally, however you want them to be, and that's what this is.
And there's a recorded declaration that makes sure that all of the parcels are unified together as a whole shopping center, basically, and has cross-access easements and whatnot. So we have reviewed that, and they have contemplated this subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
What does the, you can't see it on there, but it's the area will be added to the parcel from all the way to the top left.
It's really tiny. It's going to be added to the self-storage parcel. Is it a self-storage parcel next one?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have no use for it. We were, yeah, we were approached by the Biden property owner, so through this subdivision, he will be that little tenth of an acre, I don't know how big it is, will be merged into his lot.
Any other questions to Luke or Rick?
I have some questions. There's three lots here. There's lot A, B, and C, and C is supposed to be an alley going in there.
Yeah.
And then what's going on the other two pad sites there, A and B?
Well, there's a Popeyes on one of them, and there's still to be determined on the retail pad site.
That hasn't been determined yet?
No. There's been inquiries, but nothing, you'll be the first to know, because I assume we'll probably want to change the plan when we got approved, whenever we find somebody. There's been, there's nobody I can say right now that's attending in that parcel.
Okay. Now, along Fur Avenue, there were a number of residents who came to prior board meetings, and this is coming up to be discussed, and there were a number of issues which they raised, namely construction scheduling was one issue, sanitary sewer, I believe, was another one, also noise at night, the deliveries for the alley particularly was another issue, and then also signage along the entranceway to indicate that it's not a through street. Now, have there been any problems with the residents as far as coming to an amicable resolution of all those issues?
I'm not aware of any, but I think the township would probably be more aware than we would, Mark, or do you have any resident issues?
No, I asked actually this afternoon if there was any complaints or anything about our construction guy there, and there hasn't been any that we've heard of.
We didn't meet with the residents on signage. I mean, the site's under construction now. This is really just a legal formality of creating these four lots, but if there's a problem, call me or, well, actually, call Mark.
Well, I understand why we're here tonight, but I'm just answering the question in the interest of the residents who live along Fur Avenue.
I think they're, I think they agree with it.
Okay.
Any other questions, John?
No.
One question, final question from me, I think, is how is lot D accessed with these changes?
Is lot D the lot in back?
Yeah.
There's access out the back to, I think, Rick, and I'm not sure, there's an ability to access through the rear of the lot. I think it abuts another development property.
It abuts Turner Lane.
Turner Lane?
So is that the township property on Turner Lane?
It's township use on our property.
Yeah. So there is a small section up here. Township owns part of it, but township has also been using part of that parcel, which was really school district property for quite some time, longer than I've been here. So for the storage yard.
Is that part of the parcel that we're getting?
Yes.
So which part of this parcel is owned by the school district? That's confusing.
Nothing is owned by them anymore.
Was. Was.
Well, the road.
I say it was all owned, that's right. This was school district property all the way back to there, and we have, so is township property.
This is township here.
Yeah.
This is.
That's, okay.
The parcel, the parcel D.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
So I think what is your question answered there? Where do you access that? Would you access that ten acres from Turner Lane?
Well, it's going to be tight, because you've got a creek, and we can't get to the other side of the creek.
So does this plan show any proposed means to get to that ten acres?
Through the, through the safety and C lots?
Yeah. I have that one, that's a massive.
I don't think so, no, and I don't think you could. I mean.
But we need to create some sort of easement then?
Yeah.
I mean, if we can, we can create an access easement. I thought that the topographic features coming from the back of where we're developing to the township property, maybe it wasn't topographic, maybe it was environmental features. I don't know if you, I don't know if you want to go across that area, but it's no big deal. You need access.
Well, could, yeah, could we just add as a, maybe as a condition of approval, and a note thrown at the last minute, but that to the extent that that parcel would be conveyed, that there would be some appropriate means of access easement provided?
Yes.
Is it satisfactory to both parties?
It works. Yeah, that's fine.
You can even do that because of the weapons there.
That's my question.
Well, that's making, we would know that it's right now sitting at where it's best to put that, but that's why I would require further analysis and study.
But that whole area is protected. I'm sure there is.
Well, the one area that's not, the one they're just talking about was the recycle yard. We have to take a look at that. I haven't thought about that. But yeah, we can provide it. That's a, that's a fine condition.
Maybe send a note on the plan that indicates that the property owners support the township or whoever is now attending parcel D to develop an appropriate access easement, something like that.
But yeah, as I was saying, I'm listening to Dave's point, which is that side of the creek, this south side of the creek, if there's an access. So if this parcel is donated to the township, and if in some future year, there is some kind of improvement to the water lines or stormwater management project, there might be a need to access that south side of the creek through this A, B, C lots.
Right, I wasn't suggesting that it had to come from Turner Lane, with just any access.
So as long as it's able to walk towards an access given from Paley Pike, that would be fine. There's going to be accessibility, if you access it from Turner Lane, or.
We already just, we have a location that's mutually satisfactory to both parties, because they're going to have lease agreements in place.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just mutually available access.
If I may, we're happy to work with the town to provide access easements wherever it works out. Just let us know who to follow up with to kind of tie it down a little bit. I don't know if it can be accessed through Fur Avenue, through the end.
Yeah, just look at that later, just as long as you have the language in the contract to say mutually favorable access.
Sure.
For now.
And again, yeah, we're obviously pleased and grateful that this could potentially become township property and preserve some of the natural, natural land there for the ancient creek.
Sure.
Problem, the whole area. Any other questions?
If I may, I'll follow up with Jamie, exploring options.
Yeah.
All right. Can the public comment?
Let's get a motion, then ask the public comment, if you don't mind, Jamie. So at this point, are there any other board questions or comments? A motion to approve the.
What I'd like to make comment before you vote to approve something.
You will.
It's her, there's a motion, a second, and then you.
So is there a motion from the board to approve the final amended subdivision, land about subdivision land development plan for the commercial shopping center at eight twenty-nine Paley Pike, subject to mutually satisfactory agreement for access to part lot D from Paley Pike or Fur Lane?
Assumed.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any final board comments or questions on the motion? Okay, option either public comment or questions. Jamie?
So we all know this spring system back here is one of the worst areas for flooding, and one of the areas that most needs stormwater management, and not just stormwater management as it might pertain to development of an individual lot, but a more regional approach to stormwater management for an area that's been developed for so many years essentially without any stormwater management. Can you tell me what stormwater management is being proposed for the development of the locks on Paley Pike, and how that stormwater might specifically help to address a problem that exists along the creek?
The stormwater management that's been designed for this site meets all current township ordinances. It consists of an infiltration or a surface detention basin, conveyance systems, and it is not specifically designed to address Goose Creek PRP. It's designed to address township ordinances, and we do not have the ability to make the developer do anything beyond township ordinances. So if something is to be done with Goose Creek and this other parcel, that will be done by the township at some later date.
And the piece that they were talking about conveying to the people with the storage unit, can you blow that up and show us that again?
It's right here. It's got a little red thing.
So why is it that the piece where the stream is may be conveyed to the township and may not? I mean, that sort of, I may give you a good thing, I may give you nothing.
Just to be clear, West Ocean Stanbury LLC has offered this to the township. We are working through a process involving legal counsel and all the rest of it to make sure that, just like tonight, how we access it, we're working through those details, but the board has indicated intention to, if everything is correct, to accept the donation. So it's only a timing thing that the word "may" is in, and unless there is a reason why it's not acceptable at this point, and we don't have any evidence that that would be the case.
Is there any possibility that anything is that we're talking about could be a bad thing to grant? I mean.
That would be a good thing. We can access the whole parcel from two locations there. That's what we ask, that's what we ask.
Could others access this in the future? Somebody wanted, some board of supervisors said, forget this, we'll just put it up for another Popeyes. We've got access through, you know, they can come through the Paley site, they've got an easement access, and we'll go right through there.
There's only a person, this lot D is actually developable, because the most of it is wetland, there's an exception on the north side, close to where the, what's the Wood Street at the top there, right? Yeah, true. Not Turner Lane, the other one.
The one's parallel to it.
Turner Lane, and across the top, there are a few acres there, it might be developable.
Right, but when somebody says something isn't developable because it's weapons, I'm a weapons expert, that's not true. That just means you need certain permits to impact weapons, but they're clearly developable for against permits.
Don't hurt the township ordinance if it's not. Because this parcel of the ten acres, they would be developing it if our ordinance is allowed you to. So the ten acres is being offered because it cannot be developed by the developer, and the township has expressed an interest in doing some sort of stream protection or floodplain management.
Right.
Because of the issues that you have raised, everybody knows it's a flooded area.
Right, that's why I'm raising these issues, because Lord knows every square foot there should be.
This is going to be a good thing, because right now, there's no stormwater management on that Westchester area, it's a property, as Rick was explaining, this will put in current best management practices for stormwater, so there'll be less.
Why, gotcha.
The donation of this parcel, should it occur, will allow the township in future years to consider a, as Kristin described, a dedication to the current problems we have. This is all good for the stormwater.
Does the piece have, does the boundary line adjustment between this parcel and the storage unit have to be done? Will there be additional store, impervious surface put on that piece that's going to be conveyed to the adjacent, or is that going to be restricted against future impervious surface on that piece?
The intention of the owner of the self-storage building, if I understand correctly, is to keep this additional area as open space so they can complete the building to the rear of the property. So the area to be conveyed is going to remain as open space.
But could it be restricted by the township? I mean, I understand everybody's intention, but could it, could it be specified that it can't be built on?
I don't think we have the right to do that.
Well, you don't have to grant the boundary line adjustment.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
We need subdivision land development requirements, you must approve it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the motion? I think we're ready to take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number five, which is a presentation from Ms. Cohen of Westchester Communities That Care.
Hello, thank you for having me back. I think I have a pal, there we go. So I'm with an organization called Westchester Communities That Care. We are committed to improving outcomes for youth through partnership and prevention. We envision a greater Westchester area where our youth are supported by not just their parents, but their peers and their communities to live substance-free, violence-free, and emotionally healthy lives. We, our nonprofit is one of many across the country that operates based on a nationally recognized and evidence-based CTC model that was developed down at the University of Washington many years ago. I should probably know what year that was, but I don't. You can spell that. So one of the things that we do is we offer opportunities for youth to use their voice and their talents to positively impact their peers. On the left, you can see students just last week, actually, created this bulletin board for Pierce Middle School. They wanted, they found out information about vaping, and they wanted to, as I said, find a way to impact their peers and share what they had learned. On the right, we have a couple of young men, and there's another whole group of them behind the scenes there, making a video about, to encourage people, find healthy ways to connect with their friends. Next. Similarly, we offer opportunities for parents in our community to do the same thing, to use their skills and their voices to positively impact their peers, right, impacting other parents. What you're seeing is Hillsdale Elementary, their community invited us out to their back-to-school event to connect with the kids, but to also have parents sign pledges that they were going to establish in their homes, and their school community was going to be a place that would protect kids' brains. So of course, we shared information about how good ways to do that, but it was very exciting to have them out there and showing that they're, you know, we need to lift up the conversations, and that was what this was about. Beyond youth and parent programs, we also bring together all sectors of our community, including education, faith, nonprofits, local government, and law enforcement, to craft a unified approach to building resilience in our youth and families. This community-wide engagement in local primary prevention is a core component of all CTCs. It's a strategy that science says can create a legacy of physical and mental health for residents in our area. The science also tells us that there are really good reasons to follow the CTC model. Obviously, thirty-seven percent less likely to binge drink, youth are thirty-three percent less likely to smoke cigarettes, and are twenty-five percent less likely to engage in violent behavior. That is for communities that embrace this model. It also has been proven to have a five-point-one, five-point-thirty-one dollars and cents return on investment. But it's not enough for us just to have a coalition, we have to make sure that each sector is engaged so that that approach I talked about is unified. West Ocean Township already supports us by sharing campaigns that we come up with. This was last year's, and we use this based on data that comes, it's hyper-local, it comes straight from teens in the Westchester community, so we can look at what our community's biggest risks and lowest protective factors are for our kids. risks and lowest protective factors are for our kids. So thank you, because you're already doing that, and that's, that's really fabulous. There will be a new campaign around the holidays to address underage drinking around the holidays, and then another campaign in 2023 that's going to examine volunteerism and the connection with that and our mental health. I don't know what Chris is sounding like. These were data from something called the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, which I'm going to explain briefly in a second, but these were our, our numbers from 2017, 2019, and then 2021 regarding volunteerism. Kids were asked if they reported, if they had volunteered in the last 12 months, and you can see that our numbers are just steadily declining on that. It is something where you're able to find a way to be of service to somebody else. It's a key factor in, in building one's resilience. It gives you a sense of value and purpose, and it's very important for our youth to feel that, not just adults. I don't know what I have on my card, but I just went. So yeah, so the Pennsylvania Youth Survey is something that, is the data we primarily use. It's given at the Westchester Area School District. They surveyed close to 3,000 kids in grade six, eighth, 10th, and 12th, and they're surveyed on all sorts of things from, not just behavior around alcohol use, but also their, or substance use, but their perceptions, their attitudes, what they think their peers think, what they think their parents think. It helps them to, us to be able to see as a community, not just what the issue is, but what's underlying it. So here's the next slide. So this is just a quick snapshot. You can look at this and see two things really stand out. One is that use of underage substances among kids under 18 goes up as they get older. Probably not very surprising to a lot of people. It also, something that really stands out is that alcohol is the number-one substance used by youth. There's a lot of talk in the news in the last several years around opioid use, prescription drugs, and there should be, it's a big problem. It's not the biggest concern for kids who are under 18. So that continues to be alcohol, and alcohol continues to be a leading, in deaths, I think there were 88,000 deaths in the same year that there were 86,000 deaths from opioids. So it's, it's really up there, and something we very much need to pay attention to, especially with our youth. If you look at this, I've always been quick to point out, so if we look at alcohol just as an example, if, I forget what numbers I have. If 34% of the teens are consuming alcohol on a somewhat regular basis, they're asked in the last 30 days, which is what gives us that measure, if 34% are, within 66% are not, right? So we do want to be careful, we're not trying to paint a picture that all of our kids are drinking and smoking and using marijuana, because they're not. But it is still a substantial number of kids, and we want to make sure we're addressing it. The whole purpose of primary prevention is that you get there and lay the foundations before issues become and really feel insurmountable. So that is why we care, it's for those roughly 2,000 students that make up that 34% in the Westchester area's population. This is another reason we care. When kids start young, it's one of the leading predictors of someone needing treatment when they're older. You can see from this, 80% of kids started, 80% of people in treatment, rather, started using substances before they were 25, and that has everything to do with brain development, because that is when our, our brains are not yet fully formed and more likely to create pathways for addiction. This is another very interesting data point that came from our, the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, and it shows that for our sixth graders, their perception of risk is steadily declining. How risky they perceive alcohol, how risky they perceive marijuana, and how risky they perceive smoking or vaping. So we care about this, because again, there's a direct correlation, and these are the kinds of things that our goal as an organization is to nip these things in the bud. That's why we're thrilled about that project we showed you about Pierce Middle School kids who are helping to show their kids, show their peers, you know, that there is something to this and to pay attention. Another very telling fact that came from the survey is that in Westchester, drugs and alcohol, for the teens who are using them, again, remember, it's not a majority of our kids, but for those who are, three-quarters of them are getting it straight from our homes. Either they're, they're taking it maybe without asking, some are being given it with permission, but it's very important, and these are all types of things that we are paying attention to, and we need to drill down and make some choices about what are the messages, and how do we get these messages out to the public? So there was a proposal that should have been in with your board packet for some ways that we thought we might additionally, beyond sharing of the campaigns, that we might be able to work together. There's a couple different avenues around how we can get in more contact with parents. One of them is a Power of Parents presentation, which was established through research out of Penn State University and put together in conjunction with Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And so that's a, a research-based prevention program that is very good for parents to hear and get these messages when their kids, again, we usually have everybody leave there with a booklet that the researchers put together on how to have these ongoing intentional conversations with your kids, starting when they're relatively young. So we think this would be a really good fit for people who have, for the general public, but also for people maybe who have come in contact with the law around, you know, unhealthy drinking, or drinking and driving, or underage drinking in the home. There's a, there's a whole list of people we might, but so there's research behind this, and we, we'd love to see if we use more. Something that's also very interesting to point out, this is a, a national study that the National Institute of Health did, and you can see if you look between 2019 and 2021, the numbers of youth using substances went down. So people are always asking, and that's why I put it in here for everyone, like, what impact did the pandemic have? So as far as substance use, things actually went down, and in Westchester, we saw the same, similar decline. More research is needed to examine the reasons for this decline. The director of the National Institute for Drug Abuse cited three things that she supposes are going to be likely, but there's, there's no evidence yet, but she is inclined to think it's going to likely be drug availability was less during the pandemic, there were differences in the amount of peer pressure that was happening, and increased family involvement. So I love that last one, because I think that's just very, very telling, that we just, there was this surge of people spending more time with their families in that time, and this went down. So again, no evidence for that one. The next slide. This is something that we also found in the PACE, which is a, a little more concerning. As I said, there was good news in the PACE data, which showed that the drugs and alcohol numbers went down, but if you look at these, the blue line again is our 2021 data, and even just look at that first data point, kids who reported they felt so sad that they stopped doing usual activities, really had a huge jump there. So we looked, again, when we talk in terms of risk and protective factors, depressive symptoms are a risk factor for our kids, and this is something where we look at it, then we know that co-occurring disorders is a very real thing. People in the industry, I know, are very concerned to see what the next round of data might look like because of this. Because if people that here are feeling this, will they seek out substance use as coping mechanisms? And again, we don't know, but our goal, our organization, is to be as preventative and proactive on issues about this as possible. So also in the packets that you got, one of the things that we proposed was a training for your camp counselors. One of the things that we thought this might do would be to really build resilience in your camp counselors themselves, but we saw it really as having a dual outcome. There, these teens who participate in our training would be engaged in team-building activities, they would get evidence-based suicide prevention training, which would be really good for them to be aware of how to identify risks and signs of potential suicide ideation, and then they would also learn about resilience and what makes people more resilient or less resilient, and practice some of those resilience-building skills. The dual outcomes, this is what they would get from that, they would increase their sense of value, their sense of purpose, and their connections, their human connection. I got fancy on the transition there. And you can just flip them again. So not only are we impacting the counselors by this, but by them being more aware of what builds resilience, they can reinforce this with the campers as well throughout the summer, not with any specialized program that has to be added on to the plates of what people are doing, but simply by recognizing it within our youth. It's what we ask parents to do, it's what we hope our teachers will do, and even your 16, 17-year-old counselors become trusted adults to those campers. They become these big kids, and they're, they're the model, they become the model. So if we can teach them what needs to be shouted out for these young kids and say, "Way to go, look at that, what you're doing, that's so good for you," that's really our So yes, that was, in a nutshell, those are the topics that I think were in the proposal that you got in your packets, and we would love to work more closely with all of our townships, and we really appreciate you having us out. Any other questions?
Thank you, Laura. Is there any further questions? Ms. Cohen?
So just to be clear, there's three programs that you're offering in your tool bag, if I can use that term. Name needs the Parent Speaker Series, where you, I would imagine, the best thing there would be to partner with Parks and Rec Department here in West Goshen Township, where you would offer basically discussions from speakers that you would provide dealing with tech, issues such as technology, mental health, building emotional toolbox, and so on and so forth. That's, that's one. And another one is the Power of Parents Program we talked about, and there are the logical thing to be to partner with the West Goshen Police Department, where it has to do with young people who have had problems with DUIs and drug-related, or drinking problems.
If that specifically is more geared toward parents, could that power the parents' presentation?
That would be more parents than not.
Yeah, we found what happened, and I think I spoke with your chief of police regarding this, that maybe, so connecting in with the judges who are, are seeing parents who are getting to have them come to a training about this.
Oh, I see.
Might be where the line of action is. We've had people get that program kind of prescribed by a judge, and so we, we would just like to see more of it, because it's a good program.
And then the third thing is that the resilience training could be counselors, again, have to be partnering with Parks and Rec. Would they actually, would you actually train the counselors?
Uh huh.
And you train them in terms of what, resiliency training?
Yep.
For the people that they be counseling and who serve?
It would be for, it would be twofold, right? It'd be for themselves, they're teenagers, and we want them to, to learn what they do in their own lives that are, that builds resilience for themselves. We want them to know who they surround themselves with, we want them to look at all these different factors, know when they, when they challenge themselves to do something really hard, to speak in public. You know, when they, when they do something that's really hard, that builds resilience. So even though it's easy to shy away from something challenging, and then what we want, the two, the dual component of that is that throughout the summer, when they see a kid try something that was really hard for them, they can say it out loud, so that we're starting them very young, learning what resilience, what resiliency looks like, and they can choose that for themselves as they grow.
In my opinion, I think we're in what you'd call a mental health crisis, especially the young people, is they turn to drugs and alcohol and other cognitive behaviors and try to deal with that, and if we can be proactive about it, I think we're doing our jobs as township, and so do we. So I like your ideas.
Laura, how do you partner with the school district? You know, when I think about this, it's kind of not just West Goshen here, it's, you've got a whole Westchester area community for a school district, it's kind of a community issue.
Sure.
So how, how do you partner with the school district, and what are your sources of kind of funding today?
Well, our sources of funding are more through Chester County Drug and Alcohol, and through the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board primarily. The way we partner with the school district is much more of an in-kind thing, they promote these parents, Parent Speaker Series, they will co-promote those among parents in the district, we have principals who share the campaigns that you share in their newsletters, pupil services supervisor sits on our board, so we're very closely in tune with them. They use this data, they, they give, they give this survey to the 3,000 kids who take it, they help us, I mean, that's an enormous support to our entire community, is to have that information. It's been, they've been doing it since 1999, so we have longitudinal data that we can look at, so it's not, you know, it's not a fly-by-night kind of thing, right? It's been something that they've been very invested in for many, many years. And, and they have a whole host, they, they look at this in conjunction with a whole bunch of, of other data points, and for example, they're, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but their increase in mental health supports within the school buildings is just phenomenal. They've been adding and adding and adding every chance they get to get the funding to support that. They've recognized the, the issue, I think John Wright said, is an emotional crisis for our communities, and they're the boots on the ground, and they're dealing with that every day, so having them get more and more mental health support inside the buildings is, is really good.
Would Chester County Drug and Alcohol help fund the Parent Speaker Series, and how it opens, I mean, what's delivered around how they're able to help you accomplish some of these things?
Well, they, I mean, they already fund us, they fund us for that coalition model piece, they fund us for me to come and try to engage more partners in the process. I don't know that they, they would fund additional on top of what they already give us, I don't have any indication that that's going to happen.
Kimmy, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you have any consistent training from schools for this type of thing.
I do know there's, there are, there's a prevention provider in the area called Compass Mark, and I do know that they've been doing a lot with the schools, and I don't want to speak about their programs, but they have, they do more in-school programming. So again, I can't really speak to it, but I know it exists, and I know the schools are taking advantage of it, but that would be specifically around, you know, substance use and reducing, they do, for kids that are getting caught vaping, there was a bit of a surge in that, not, okay, not this round, but, you know, when they feel that surge coming, and they see more and more kids getting caught in the bathrooms, or then they bring in these programs that will, you know, explain to kids specifically about that particular substance and that particular modality, right, the vaping itself. Yeah.
Other questions? Other thoughts anyone wants to share, the board, and all of these to the public? I mean, just a comment from me, I mean, what you do is tremendous and very worthwhile, you know, as you have an ask for us in terms of some dollars as well. I think, you know, as part of our overall preparation of a budget, we have to think through several things. One is, there are many other worthy organizations in this community that aren't here tonight, but if given the opportunity, we'd just as well understand that they're an ask for help.
Sure.
My personal opinion is there are some things here that might make sense, certainly in-kind work, whether it's having access to facilities for a promotional event, continuing our partnership with promotion of what you do in the newsletter. I do think the, we should talk to our Parks and Rec team about the camp counselors and the training that they get, and how they've been beating better at what they do, good kind of proposal that you had here. I do have some concerns about funding a Parent Speaker thing from West Goshen Township, it's really community effort, it's a school district, Chester County-related, Westchester area community-related event. Although it's great to take the lead, as I said, there are other competing things, both from great organizations as well in the community, as well as our other project branches, so those are just my personal thoughts, and obviously, you, as I said, you can answer this, we really appreciate it today.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate it, I, reasonable, and I understand that you guys, you definitely have a role to fill and hard choices to make all the time, so...
Yeah, I would suggest to the board that we take into consideration... Yeah, I would suggest to the board that we take into consideration what you've asked for, we have a budget process coming up and some tough decisions here, next couple of weeks, month through the end of the year, so we'll look it up, mind us, tonight, continue the conversation. So I open it up for the public, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Cohen? Doug?
Do you deal with kids from broken families, single parent situation, because that's a deep source of problems for kids when parents divorce, that...
It can be, I mean, the issue for kids, as far as building resilience and having the foothold they need to become resilient and say no to drugs and alcohol when the time comes, has more to do with, you know, arguing and fighting in the home and kind of that adversarial relationship. So if that comes with divorce and single-family homes, then yes, but even if parents are together, it's more the fighting that is the divorce. And what we do is called universal prevention, meaning it's for across the board. We don't wait until there's an issue to say, "Okay, now there's an issue, so we're going to address it with these particular kids," understanding that there are subsets of a population who might be more at risk, we could do something specifically for that, but we're really still looking at things that are much more universal across the board rather than targeting that specifically.
Do you also work for organizations such as Big Brother, Big Sister, or Scouts?
We would, we did, you know, I've talked to both those organizations, they're not necessarily actively in our coalition, but yeah, we've toyed around with different partnerships with them and what we might do, but, yeah.
Hey, Margie?
Hi, this is one, this is the manager, and thank you for all the work you do, but I do agree with our chairman regarding resources, and I feel like partnering with the schools and whether it's in-kind donations and with the county, you know, taxes, we're all paying school taxes and county taxes and township taxes, and I'm still there to write over that, and, you know, it's just admirable, but, you know, I think as a local government, it's, you know, keep our streets, keep our public safety, you know, trash picked up, sewer water, and it seems this is more of a health mental department, and I don't know that we're equipped, or should we try to extend our resources in this area?
Just to play devil's advocate, and I'm not going to keep this going on long, we are in a mental health crisis. We heard from our chief just the other day that 17 beds at the ER were taken by people that are struggling with mental health. The reason that that's happening, I think, is, there are many reasons why that's happening, but clearly it's something that needs our attention, because whatever we've been doing hasn't been enough. So I think we're going to need to start thinking outside the box on this mental health issue, and I'm sure that a lot of that does start when they're children, and with drugs and alcohol involved, as we all know, it's becoming a growing problem. So $6,000 doesn't seem like a lot to start down that road to me, but I agree with our chairman as well, we will definitely take it into consideration and talk about it.
Thank you. Is there any other public questions or comments? All right, well, thank you again, as usual, we really enjoyed being here and telling us what's going on, and great work you did, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Loretta.
Okay, moving on, next on the agenda is item number six, which is a presentation from Sean Fabian from HRG regarding updates to the West Coast Township Pollution Reduction Plan. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, it's good to be here again. Again, my name's Sean Fabian with HRG, we just finished up the revisions to the Pollution Reduction Plan, there's an existing plan in place that several best management practices are being added to that plan. The original plan had to go through a public comment period and review and approval from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, so anything we do in the revision has to go through that same process. So we went through the actual revisions to the form, it's ready now to go into that 30-day public comment period, where we would then incorporate any comments that are made before it would be made into a submission, but wanted to go over a couple of the highlights of the changes and some of the challenges of making revisions to the initial plan that we had as we went through that process. So the original plan went through a desktop application for all modeling called Mapshed, that's no longer a supported program under the DEP, and because it's a desktop application, you can't even boot the program up anymore, so everything runs through Model Y Watershed now. We did have to work with the department to go through how to take all our initial loadings from the one software and kind of migrate it, so we had an apple-to-apple comparison with the initial loading for everything that we had. So the problem that we ran into is the second you add one thing, you can't just add it, you have to rebuild the entire model with all of the waste allocations within, all the different drainage areas within the township, and rebuild all of that so that you can then add that one or two projects to it. So we've completed that process.
Sean, I ask you a question on that.
Absolutely.
So presumably all the other units of powers with PRPs are in the same boat, right? This was the chain of software, is it something that you had chosen, or that this was something...
From the department, yeah, and a lot of the pollution reduction plans that I've done recently were done off of the simplified methods. So there are a couple of different methods that you could utilize at the time, the Mapshed was a requirement whenever you have a TMDL plan to match into all the waste load allocations that were built within the TMDL plan, so we unfortunately could not use that simplified method for all those revisions. So this is something that, what the department was using for their modeling at the time and what's currently available to model are completely different and incompatible. So the one was a desktop application, which is no longer supported, so similar to, you know, CAD licenses, GIS licenses, when you have older versions, they are no longer supported, you can't even open and acquire the data or export it over. Thank you. And that was one of the biggest challenges, is just getting through that step to work with the department to make sure that we were asking the right questions, so that when we submit it, we can hopefully get through their review process effectively. We do have in the documents, since this is the second time this is going to the public, kind of place savers for how we revise, which sections were revised, how those revisions were made, so when this becomes available to the public for their review, they have a section-by-section breakdown of what actually changed, and then we can kind of walk through that rationale of the challenges we had, how we addressed them, how we had to adjust loads so that we're matching the existing plans that we have to reference in. So if anybody would like to dig in in more detail and understand some of those decisions, that's all detailed in this plan.
When do you anticipate going into this DEP or RFP?
So, we're open tonight, we get approval from the board that we can go out to public comment, it's a mandatory 30-day minimum public comment period, at which point we take a look at what comments we receive back, depending on the amount and intensity of those comments. It generally takes us, you know, days to several weeks to incorporate those in before we're ready to submit to the department for their review and approval. So at this point, until you know what comments you get back, I would say it's probably looking at the two, maybe three-month window until everything can be submitted, reviewed by the department.
Sean, what was the outcome of using the new software on the, like, for example, the baseline pollution loading data, so these tables that are in the updated PLT? Did the numbers change significantly, or was it...
They changed to a minor amount, so in the initial, we had 374,000 pounds of sediment reduction we needed, we're in that 390,000 pounds, so I mean, it's in the vicinity. We did have to adjust some of the projections and waste load allocations with the new software so that we more closely matched what the existing TMDL plans had, and to match closely how everything was being modeled within each of the watersheds. So there was some work we had to do within the model itself to make sure that we were in that same zone of impact of what we initially credited with all the best management practices that we're moving forward with that are unchanged within the plan.
Okay.
Does this include the sewer plant?
It does include the riparian buffer for the sewer plant, it includes Iowa, it includes the stream restoration we were talking about before, pursue that as an opportunity. So those kind of drove the need for the revisions of the plan, that the opportunities that we had weren't realized at the point that the initial pollution reduction plan was pulled together, so that was the driving force of the revisions.
I have a couple of comments about something, information here, which I think is kind of needs updating, should, do you want me to make them tonight, or how do you want to manage that? I mean, so for example, just give you an example, then we'll figure out whether it's put in a public comment or something, I don't know. So, on page seven, which is, talks about the map of West Coast, and talks about a large pocket of forested land approaching the center of the township. So when this was originally drafted, my guess is Woodlands of Greystone was not being developed, or it was still a large tract of forested land. Now that is not the case, so that kind of is outdated.
Okay.
And then on page 12, on the short-term reduction, talks about six pollution load-reducing primary BMPs, but on the next page it shows seven, so I don't know if we've added one, or it's just an inconsistency between the two. So I think it should say seven pollution load-reducing primary BMPs now.
They had an older reference in there.
Yes, but I think other than that, I didn't find too many, so it's an engineer, it's not good that I'm looking at this in this detail, but it looks good.
No, it's better to capture it now than have to make revisions to things.
Does the board have any other comments on the...
I just have a question here, on page 16 of your report, there you talk about the short-term best management practice implementation schedule, how does the, does that need to be updated with this review process for the DEP, and are we on schedule? Is table 12, the implementation schedule?
Yeah, I'm trying to review down through it, since I'm not looped into some of the new projects and timelines those are on, I was trying to take a look at what we had projected and everything. Because I know some of these are complete, like the Iowa basins are complete, the riparian buffer's complete, so you have a couple of completed projects. I know that they just kicked off some RFP responses for some of the additional ones to get those moving into design, field review, things like that. For your deadlines, too, I believe you're on a longer timetable than everybody that's under the general permit, so I would, from my understanding, we're not in a bad position for the schedule, but we definitely have a lot of work yet that has to be accomplished to make the full wasteload allocation reductions.
So are we going to be permanent year three at the moment?
Yes.
Twenty-three, are we going to be permanent year four?
Correct, okay. But anybody that has a general MS4 permit, their requirements are coming due here in 23, so you definitely have a longer timeline than anybody that's under a general permit.
How much longer?
Two years.
And what enforcement measures does the DEP have enforcing this pollution reduction plan? What happens if it's attached and doesn't meet the deadlines?
It's actually covered in your MS4 permit, so it's a condition within the permit. So we have different appendices in addition to the six minimum control measures that you have to abide by, that get assigned based on characteristics of your watershed. So Appendix E is the one that's driving the need for all our sediment-reducing and nutrient-reducing best management practices. So we would be in violation of the MS4 permit if we would not meet those target deadlines within what they prescribe.
What does that mean, a violation? They sue us for a million dollars, or they just send us a nasty letter? I mean, what exactly does it mean to be in violation of the MS4 permit?
That's up to the department or the EPA to decide what the intensity of the issue is, but it is an issue, it's an issue that they could pursue civil action against the township if there's a violation of the permit.
John, it's like if this MS4 treatment plan was in violation of its current requirement, you'd get a notice of violation, and you have a period of time to correct it, debate it, you could be subject to civil penalties. So I have not seen that with MS4 permits yet, on wood.
There have been...
They are short-staffed, for them to go back and be able to, first of all, even just approve all of these plans is, you know, a colossal effort for them, number one, and number two, to go back and make sure that everybody's in compliance, again, they're not in a staff position, they can do that, but that's not to say that the staff don't give them the power they do.
Yeah, and it's an EPA program that's delegated to the DEP to enforce, so if the EPA doesn't like anything that the department's handling for enforcement, they can always step in. I do know in my area, I live in the Harrisburg area, there have been several audits from both DEP and EPA recently. I think that's driven more by some of the bay commitments that are going on right now, so I think a lot of the attention's more on Chesapeake Bay drainage, but that still exists as a potential.
There's our existing EPA incentive that we have, that's a sewer plant for phosphorus, phosphorus that we've been working on for years now, what we mentioned provides, having anything to do with this, it's already...
It's a separate permit.
It's a separate one.
Okay, so we're looking for the board to make the motion to move the amended combined TMDL plan to publish for public review, that's what you're looking for tonight.
And could you just do Sean's changes? Do you make that motion to appropriate Sean's changes?
So I'll make the motion to publish the combined TMDL plan for West Coast Township to be available for public review, for this change, right, I think we provided, through a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any board comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions about the amended TMDL plan or the motion? Very good, so we have a right to take a vote, while in favor say aye, while opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Up next is agenda item number seven, which is a presentation from Carol Engineering regarding the status of the stormwater feasibility study being undertaken for specific areas of West Coast Township, and Chris Peterson is with us from Carol Engineering, talked through the document that's provided, it's available upward. Just in terms of background for this, I'll just explain it, so previously in June, the board had approved Carol Engineering's new assessment of the stormwater conditions in 16 areas of the township. Subsequent to that, our engineer did a little bit of prioritization on study areas, and the board asked for a presentation on the first one that you did, so that we could understand the kind of the work, quality of the work, practice that's going to be reduced, and see if we're just meeting the board's needs. So Chris is with us tonight, first area we looked at was the North Hills neighborhood in the township, and we have information for him, so over to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for having me tonight. Pardon me, still getting nervous, sorry. I'm Chris Peterson with Carol Engineering, and some of this need you very to touch upon, but tonight I'm here to present to you our initial area of study for the township's regional stormwater feasibility study. As you're aware, we've cracked previously to prioritize 16 areas across the township that are included, that are to be included in this study. The area designated with the highest priority at that time was the North Hills community, which we have designated as Area Nine. The report included in your packet was prepared specifically for the North Hills community and will serve as the general template for the remaining areas of the site. Tonight I will discuss the major elements of our evaluation, review the various maps we have put together, and also touch on some of the recommendations that we've made and the associated costs with those. At the end of this presentation, I'll answer any questions that you may have, and determine if the current board template meets the board's needs. First off, the purpose of this study was to evaluate the existing drainage characteristics of Area Nine, as we refer to, which is the North Hills area, to examine the feasibility of installing a stormwater system which would help mitigate some of the known flooding issues in those neighborhoods. Our evaluation included the next major points. First, we conducted an inventory of the existing stormwater infrastructure that is present. This is included in Appendix A of the report that we provided to you, with a series of several maps that you see before you tonight, this is the cover sheet, if you would go to the next sheet, it can show you some of those areas. It's a little difficult to see, but the infrastructure, first off, the North Hills area is separated by the Westchester bypass right through the middle there, there was a north and a south area that we identify as separate drainage basins, and the items in the yellow are the existing infrastructure that you see there. So secondly, we provided a condition assessment of the existing stormwater infrastructure. We examined the existing topography and determined the relative drainage area boundaries, and then using this information, we were able to determine what the existing capacity of those existing storm sewers that are there. And then after we determined that, we were able to provide some recommendations for short and long-term improvements to the stormwater infrastructure, including expansion of the existing system, short-term recommendations... Short-term recommendations are typically limited to lower-cost maintenance items or things or defects that we see that may result in an imminent failure. Discussion of other design considerations are included in the report as well. These include easement acquisitions, physical impedances such as major utilities, trees, walls, et cetera, any required permits, and any other anticipated coordination. And then lastly, we provided an opinion of profitable cost, which is included in appendix B of the report. So we're looking at V101 right now, sheet V101. I touched on this already, but you can see there's some existing stormwater infrastructure, mainly at the points where the stormwater is concentrated and crosses some of the various roadways. The infrastructure was a little bit more robust in the southern area that runs down Collins. We were able to determine that most of the infrastructure there is deficient, which is supported by the flooding conditions that have been observed there historically during heavy rain events. So if we go to the next sheet, we can kind of touch on some of the relative drainage areas to each of one of those inlets that we have there. They've been color-coded to try to show you, you know, a scale of magnitude of what the drainage areas are getting to each inlet. And there's the inventory of all the existing inlets and things that we have out there off to the right-hand side. Those are images from our separate constants that were done. And then if we go to the next sheet, Rick. Here we have our recommendations, and I'll just try to explain to you the color coding that was done here. Anything in yellow that you still see on the plan was determined to be sufficient in terms of its carrying capacity for the under-year storm. Particularly the area to the south that crosses the Westchester bypass. There is a portion of existing 36-inch storms who are there that we determined to be sufficient capacity. However, other portions of that system were determined to be deficient. So the next color you'll see here is red. The red would indicate anything that's existing that needs to be replaced with something more appropriately sized. We were able to calculate that from the drainage areas we developed on the previous sheet. And then the last item would be the green items. This would be an expansion of the system to improve overall drainage characteristics. In the area to the north, you'll notice a couple of green pieces of storm sewer that go directly to the existing pond that's there. That was done in an effort to avoid any erosion that may occur in the steep slope areas there. So we're just taking the stormwater directly to the detention facility there. I know it's a little difficult to see, but we've also indicated areas that we think easements will be required. These areas are already in known areas to have existing stormwater infrastructure, so it wouldn't be anything new. It's just a replacement of what's already there with the appropriate size. I don't know if you have the ability to zoom in at all, Rick, on the northern portion? Where do you want to zoom in? Just above the pond and those areas.
Can we zoom in where the concrete swale is currently located and what you had in mind for that? That's just above the pond?
Yes, so you'll see a dark green line there. That's actually proposed storm sewer in lieu of the concrete swale to take everything underground rather than have it run down the concrete line swale, which eventually transitions to an earthen swale, and we did know that there's some erosion there. And if you look closely, what I was trying to indicate was the easement area. So that is shown inside cam. It's a hashed area, basically is a 20-foot easement over the alignment of the existing storm sewer there.
Okay, just to follow my question about the concrete swale, right now, that's just way below West Penn Drive. So you're looking to have that concrete swale removed, and is that a pipe that would be in place of that?
Correct, yes. So currently, the pipe goes about 100 feet to the south and then terminates, and then it becomes a concrete swale. The concrete swale is buckling. It's not of sufficient capacity, and then eventually it makes a hard right turn and then comes back left again. So it's a very irregular pattern. We want to alleviate all of that and alleviate the erosion issue that's caused by that and just take the flow right down. Put the appropriate end wall and energy dissipator right at the pond and sort of mitigate that issue that's happening there.
So what is this section here in green? What is that?
That would be new storm sewer. So that's in addition to the existing system.
So there would be storm sewer. You're suggesting you go from West Penn Drive, from the covert, all the way down to the pond?
Yes, the red portion that you just had your laser pointer on, that's existing already, so that's proposed to be replaced. And then the new portion would be picking up.
That's where your concrete swale begins, right here, right? Right on the other side of the?
It's further south than that.
Further south?
Mm-hmm.
So that would all be replaced with HPE pipe? Is that the idea?
Yes, we would select that just based on its longevity and its ultimate lower cost. All right, so we touched on the easements. So real quickly on the detention that's present, as you know, the northern area has an existing pond, which is already serving as a detention facility to slow the flood wave of that stormwater leading the North Hills north area before it enters that lower tributary shown by a dashed blue line. Separately, there's already storm sewer in the southern area conveying storm sewer directly to the water course. So detention was less of a concern for either one of these areas. However, we have identified two areas where we could potentially look at some water quality devices, particularly rain gardens, and they would be highlighted there in the seafilm color there. There's two, there's two corners of parcels that are located at the intersection there of Story Road, Collins, and also Owen, that are low-lying areas that seem to be appropriate for a stormwater detention facility. These aren't necessarily there for detention purposes and more for a water quality aspect. And that could be something that factors into your PRP plan as well.
Oh, for the rain gardens, who's going to be doing the maintenance on them? Is it the HLA? Is it?
So that would probably be one individual parcel, if you're trying to make.
Yeah, so the township would have to acquire an easement for something like that and take it upon themselves to maintain something like that. Would be our.
Or negotiate.
Or negotiate, yeah. I suppose there's room for partnerships, too. Okay. So our recommendations for the improvements are generally consisting of 2,700 linear feet of storm sewer, whether it's replacement or new storm sewer.
Yes.
This would range from 18 inches to 48-inch diameter. There would be approximately 31 new stormwater inlets and incidental restoration work. Our opinion of the profitable cost of these improvements is approximately $2.29 million. This would include construction costs, design and engineering costs, contingency of 30% to account for any unforeseen design elements and any scope adjustments that may be involved.
I have a question. On most engineering projects, especially when we use 10% contingency, I wonder why you use 30% here, or $2.29 million?
Because we don't have certain elements like survey. We don't have down measures on things like sanitary sewer to know if we need to do a realignment of the sanitary sewer at the same time. There could be watering crossings, services to dwellings that need to be relocated at the same time. There's just a lot of unknowns that we don't have right now that are discoverable when you go and do a survey and get into more of the advanced design of these things. So that's why you have a more robust contingency on something that's more of a feasibility study such as this.
I think you see the 10% when a project has already been designed and is out to bid, and then if they encounter things in the field, that's where that 10% comes in. But this isn't really a design plan yet, so.
Similar to what Wes and Chris, the survey, design, engineering, construction, admin inspection, and 10% seems a little low to me. I mean, I know it's not a sewer-type project where you've done more sophisticated design elements, but I would have expected that to be like, you know, 15% of the cost of the project. Is the reason you feel comfortable with a stormwater project like this, we only need 10% for those elements?
We took a look at the relative scope of the work and, you know, we started looking at percentages and what would make sense in terms of what I thought the engineering fees would be for that. And we also used a certain amount of our experience in previous projects such as Sunset Hollow. We did the Glen and Sylvan project coming up right now. We did the Pine Valley and Amelia project last year. So we were just trying to ballpark those costs of what we know, of what historical costs.
Are these elements about 10% for those no projects we've done in this township, did they?
I was looking at it more of a numbers basis and then equated it to a percentage at that time. I can't speak to that.
Board question, the car waiting for our Chris's presentation.
In your opinion, I mean, the way you've developed your process and sure you've broken up North Hills North and North Hills South, I mean, this project could be done in phases, in your estimation?
That's correct, yeah. That's why we gave you the breakdown just to give you scale.
Even in North Hills North Side, could that be done in phases, do you think?
I'm sorry, what was that?
For North Hill North Side, could that be done in phases as well? Or should, do you think that all needs to be done basically in one project?
Absolutely. Everything could be phased. It would be appropriate to work from the lower areas and work your way up to improve infrastructure on the low end, you know, where you have more drainage area getting to it. So we want to work from a piece of storm sewer we just discussed just above the pond area and then work up from that. So, but yes, certainly it could be phased.
I have some kind of general questions about, you know, one of the things I wanted to do before we gave it more specifics on North Hills, to talk about feasibility study itself and whether it's meeting the board's needs in terms of what we authorized for spending our money on here. So I asked the board, do you feel that the quality of report that we got, the information, the segments that Chris walked us through, is meeting your expectations of what we asked for with this study? I have to say, it was exactly what I was expecting. It was a good job, so. Which does lead to another question, though. So this is one of sixteen. You know, we commissioned this back in June, July timeframe and got going. So what is the timeline to get all this work done? One of the things we have to consider is the entirety of the effort in this township to make ourselves fit for the future with relation to these areas that don't have much soil order control and need upgrades. And, you know, one of us done is the typical picture. How long do you think it's going to take to get the same quality of study done in 15 more areas?
Yes, I was considering that as well. Some of the things, such as generating these maps, have been done for the other areas at the same time. Doesn't make sense to do that. So a lot of the work has already been done on some of these particular areas.
The whole mapping of the system, is that we're talking on the same maps we're talking about?
Just generating the aerials, the topography. We have the general drainage boundaries and everything laid out for the other areas because it just made sense to do that at that time. So with that said, that would take us to sometime in spring, early spring to mid-spring, is my estimate.
To do all of them? Okay, that's good. That's better than I was expecting, so.
Yeah, me too.
We're running this down right away.
Don't hang me, which.
Too late, too late.
So.
It's certainly a time for buttering next year.
In terms of the complexity of North Hills versus the other areas, is this typical? Is it one of the bigger ones? Is it a smaller one? I mean, I'm just trying to, in my head already, multiply 2.9 million by 15. Or is it, no, this is one of the biggest ones? I mean, what's your view of that?
My view is there's probably three that would be bigger than this, more substantial scale. And then the rest would be akin to, and then I, you know, if I had to guess, it's probably about five or six that would be rather small, just based on area.
Yeah. Was, was one of the advantages of North Hills, the fact they have this large pond available? I mean, a lot of these other areas of the township that you're going to walk out, Sheldon County, such a facility in terms of managing stormwater, is that one of the reasons why the proposed solutions for this neighborhood were the kind of cost that we have? I mean, if that had not been available in some of this, you know, what I'm just directly to agree, would it have been a more complicated project to design a solution for?
Certainly, yeah. And we anticipate that's going to be a challenge for some of the other neighborhoods.
Is the, are there a couple of recommendations for short-term work, as you said, kind of maintenance items? If they were, if you had a chance to work with it yet, would you have any comments on them?
Just briefly, we saw the safety.
I would say they're fairly minor in nature. We identified one in that grade along West Penn Drive that, you know, I would be worried about vehicle loading, and it is rather close to the road. So that's something I can discuss further with Dave. But I would say that's a minor maintenance issue, and then there was some parjing that could have been done at the end wall. Say again? On the north side of West Penn Drive?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so it looked like it just needed a little cleanup with some parjing.
Are there any questions? Other public comments or questions for Mr. Peterson?
Take a simple question. What constitutes a drainage problem? How do you know you have drainage problem?
That's a complicated question. There's, drainage problems can present themselves in a variety of ways. There could be insufficient inlets out there to collect the stormwater from a roadway, so it just sits. There could be insufficient pipe sizing to convey whatever the CFS is getting to that particular pipe. And as a result, you have an impoundment of stormwater behind, say, the head wall that's there, which leads to that pipe. Flooding in general areas, so we tend to look at all of that and try to identify what those issues are as best we can. Because a lot of this work is happening during dry weather.
The reason I ask it, in a better state municipality I lived in, our neighborhood, we were convinced that we had a drainage problem. It was a new neighborhood. And when we had the county engineer come out, or maybe it was over the phone, I honestly don't remember. I remember his answer. He said, if the water is gone off the gutters in the street, it was either 48 or 72 hours. If the water's gone after that period of time, that doesn't, that you don't have a drainage problem. There's nothing for us to fix or repair or how to develop or commit.
That's not a bad rule of thumb, but it also depends on the depth of water. I mean, are we talking about a safety issue for emergency vehicles when they have to drive through something that could be potentially eight inches to a foot deep? You know, then I would say that's more of a flooding issue there. And not, you know, even though the water's disappearing in a 72-hour period, you still have an issue with, you know, the problem at hand of being the flooding. Yes.
Does this include the Greystone South zone with the sewers already or stormwater?
It does not. Greystone South is completely separate from this. And Greystone South has its own storm sewer system, which is actually in accordance with our current requirements.
Lady, if I could.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I live in the neighborhood. And my question to you is, if the, right now, the water is, you know, getting to the pond on its own and it's taking all the sediment with it because it's cutting down the valley and washing into the pond and taking just all the roots and all the sediment with it. If you pipe it, will the water that gets to the pond be 100 years now? Will it be equally as sediment-filled because our pond is? I don't, and Rick, you can talk about this. I don't know if our pond actually counts as a retention basin. I don't know, gee.
It does not. It's not a retention basin.
It's technically called a detention basin. It's a spring-fed pond, and we swim in there. It's recreational. And we have kids swimming in there. We have loads of stuff. So we're just concerned about the quality of the water that reaches the pond. And I don't know if the pipe would think it's better because there's less sediment, it's not a rotting anymore, or if it would be worse because it's not, you know, it's going to pipe now. So can you talk about that?
Sure. I would anticipate the water quality to be improved, particularly because of one of the things that we discussed earlier, and that is the piece of the storm sewer extension leading to the pond, which is going to replace, or which may replace, the concrete line swale, which eventually goes to an earthen swale. When we were out there, the condition of the earthen swale was pretty bad. It's definitely taking some sediment with it, and it's sparsely vegetated with weeds, I would say. So we would eliminate that erosive condition. It's fairly steep in that area. So I think we would remove a lot of that sediment that's getting into the pond, particularly from that area. Part of the plan also provides an area just north of the head wall on West Penn Drive where we propose to improve a portion of that swale that runs across, which has a scope, I think it's nine forty-six.
West Penn Drive, I'm glad to see. Thank you.
It's kind of that bluer area on the cyan is.
So that would be a pipe. That would be a swale. A pipe would start across the street on West Penn Drive on the south end.
Correct, yeah. So we evaluated the condition of that swale. It is a worn area right now. There is some mild erosion. And with the placement of the proper end walls and the proper pipe sizing, we anticipate flow rates would. proper pipe sizing, we anticipate flow rates would get a little bit faster there, so that's why we propose to improve the swale in that area as well, to give it some reinforcement and then prevent any migrations of sediments.
So during Ida, that entire swale was full, it was almost touching the house that's, you know, directly to the west of it, and then Stacy or her, her house was surrounded by water, it went away within thirty-two hours, but during those, you know, I have pictures here, I don't know if you've seen the pictures, but it was a raging torrent that surrounded her house, she was on Ida, she was not able, nobody could have gotten her out of her house during that storm, so, and was Ida, and I think Ida was actually two feet above a hundred, hundred-year flood, so in your documents, you're looking at hundred -year flooding, but if we have another Ida, you know, would be more than that, how much flooding would you see, would totally last because of the work that was done on this site?
Yes, there's a lot there.
Sorry.
But I'll try to start with your first comment, which was that that area was inundated, and that comes to no surprise to me, after we determined the relative carrying capacity of the pipe crossing West Penn Drive, it was determined to have a capacity for roughly the two-year storm, somewhere at the two-year storm or even below the two-year storm, so when you have an event that has exceeded a hundred-year event, it comes, has no surprise that you would have an impoundment of water there, because basically you have a constriction of the system that can only allow so much water through, so it's going to back up the stormwater behind it and then slowly release it through the pipe, whereas now we propose to put in the appropriately sized pipe across West Penn Drive, and I'm sorry for giving a hold, this is the second part of your question.
How much flooding would you expect? Yeah, how much?
I think we can only practically size for the hundred-year, we sort of chase our tails a little bit in terms of law dimension returns here, we can't really size for the five-hundred-year event, because the dollars in terms of what it costs to put in the infrastructure versus what the actual property damage probably would be equal at that point, you know, so, typical design standards are the hundred-year storm, which are constantly adjusting based on events like Ida, so we do use updated, you know, stormwater data from NOAA at all times, which they're consistently updating.
And then when you put the pipe in, will you fill the gully above it? Like, what's going to happen to where the gully is now, just a canyon, are you going to bring in material to cover all that up and it'll just be smooth with the pipe, or like, what will it look like?
Yes, that would be part of the work, is filling in the gully, gully and just making it an even slope, similar to what's next to it.
Chris, what is the change that's being recommended for the current culvert under West Penn Drive to the revised design, so if going to the two-year storm to the hundred-year conveyance, because it's collecting from quite a wide area, how, what's the diameter change there?
So there are presently two dissimilar pipe materials there now that are eighteen-inch diameter at that headwall that you're seeing there, so the two eighteen-inch pipes, I believe had a capacity of around eighteen CFS, if I have memory serves, we're going to be looking at a forty-eight-inch diameter HDP there now, or potentially a squash pipe, depending on what the existing utilities look like around that area.
Do you like visiting the sewers?
Okay.
Well, being there in a squash pipe, can you see that?
We would do something equivalent to a forty-eight-inch, but what that does is advise your headspace.
More like an old circle, that's it. Other questions for the board, yes, Jamie?
So, first I would like to thank the board supervisors for, you know, doing this work, for having this work done, you know, we met, we, North Hill came and met with you guys in January and talked about this, and you said you would have Rick do it, and I'm glad to see that it's done, thank you so much. A couple of questions, so I'm a little, you know, just to review the report a bit, but I'm a little desirous to be able to have some input before we start doing construction drawings, so I'll make a few comments now, and then we'll perhaps talk later. So I see that you're sort of sizing these improvements to the hundred-year storm, which seems great, it seems like that's probably a new, fairly new thing, because as you say, you know, we're going from things that are less than a two-year storm to a hundred-year storm, so that's, that's good. We do use the pond for recreation, and it kind of looks like our water management pond, and so I was wondering, can I come, if you don't mind, come up here, I was wondering a couple of things, one, and we've talked to Rick about this for years, all the water from both sides of North Penn Drive sort of comes down now on this side of North Penn Drive, because people have filled swales and things like that, so we're taking water on this side of North Penn Drive that we shouldn't have to, and we would like to see the wa, some of the water stay on that side of North Penn Drive, but I know there were issues where there aren't easements, and so if the water does have to be, you know, this isn't going to take any water off the roads, we have water all over the roads, and here we're collecting it at a certain point, we have erosive velocities on the road, but we're not going to change, it doesn't look like we're talking about changing any gradient to reestablish swales to minimize that problem. So, if we're just collecting, and this is my house here, so if we replace this culvert which is collapsed, I would like to see us look at, instead of conveying all this water, which is, includes this water, because it gets over here, instead of conveying it into the pond, convey it across the street, over to the storm inlet system that was built here, we tried to do that, Rick, a little bit when you had that storm inlet put over here at the beginning of the.
You can't do that, it's not designed for that.
I hear you, but we're putting in bigger pipes here, maybe we're just.
We're not going to put bigger pipes in a brand-new development.
Right, but, and I appreciate this stuff, but I don't, I do wonder whether we're just trying to turn this into a stormwater management facility, and as a stormwater management facility, it's filled to eighty percent of its design depth. This thing was eight feet deep, ten feet, twelve feet deep when it was built in nineteen-fifty, and now because of sediment that has come in from this, two-thirds of the pond is a foot deep, so, now it does, I don't know, perhaps dredging the pond, if we have to do this, and I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, it might be the best idea, but maybe capacity to the pond needs to be restored. And then lastly, I was just wondering whether, instead of taking all the water from south, well, two things more, we have the floodplain here, and we talked about using part of the floodplain as a stormwater quality facility, could we create a water quality facility here and either take the water and instead of dumping it directly in the pond, direct it into a water quality facility before it comes to the pond, either this one, or could we take the water from South Penn, instead of piping it this way, could we pipe it down here and bring it down the hill into a water quality facility if there's too many acres here for a facility here, there'd be a much smaller acreage here. Those are sort of, and I, so what I want is to be able to have some interaction with, during the design process, you know, so that we could get what works for all of us.
Thank you, Jamie, I think there's, you know, there's good ideas, that things you've been thinking about for years probably, Chris, you know, I'm not asking you to comment on it right now, but the process we have here, we're going to get the full picture from these other study areas, then go decide how we tackle this over a period of probably years, given the entirety of what we're talking about, the bands of approaches, et cetera, and whatever process we use for the design of the stormwater improvements, we're going to engage each community around, this is what we're thinking, what are your comments, so you, there will undoubtedly be opportunities to provide input to design as it progresses to, this is what we're going to end up building.
One last comment, when we talk about doing some things as general maintenance, the culvert that's in front of my house that goes across West Penn Drive at North Penn, you know, the situation wouldn't be made immediately better if that pipe were replaced, even with the pipe the original size, because the thing is collapsed and filled in with everything, and it probably only has twenty percent of the capacity of the pipe, and as a result of the.
Have you looked at that particular location? We'll take a look, our little marshmallow out there, we'll take a look. But we'll take action to go look at that, see if it's collapsed, if it's just got debris in it that needs cleaning out. Steve?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the two-point-three, two-point-three million dollars, what percentage goes to this north side versus this south side to repair it?
There is approximately thirty-six percent more construction costs with, I'm now forgetting which side.
North Hills South was six ninety-three, Steve, and the north was twelve forty-two for the base one, and you had the thirty percent of the city.
Thank you.
What about this south side?
Because a lot of stormwater work, correctly, when they built the bypass, is that when they, they must have done some storm, some of this piping work when they built the bypass? That's what I think, that's what I think happened, so.
Other questions for Mr. Peterson, yes?
South Penn Drive, which would be the upper right-hand corner, you're showing, it looks like green, majority red, that red, that red line going from north to south is a new pipe, right?
The green portion would be new, the red is a replacement of existing.
Green is new.
That one is new?
Yeah, that's existing.
This is new?
Yes.
Correct. And that goes to where? I live right below it.
All of South Penn Drive drains to that red portion of storm sewer pipe there, and then follows the swale down to West Penn Drive and crosses West Penn Drive, there's a relative high point in the dogleg of West Penn Drive and South Penn Drive, so that prevents anything from getting down to the pond that way, which is why it makes the turn west there and goes towards the earthen swale.
Right in front of our home.
Chris, is it, I mean, I know you've shown a swale there, is that kind of indicative, indication of size, I'm just concerned that by doing a better job of collecting water, even if it's within the right-sized pipe, when it gets to that swale, it has to, the volume that currently might be causing the problems in yards and overflowing on the roads is now going to be collected more appropriately, but it's going to create a more specific volume into that swale, is it going to be hard to design that, do you think, or are you comfortable that the volume is still manageable for this overall area?
I think one thing to consider is, we're not adding any new on purpose, so we're talking about the same CFS today as we will be if these improvements are done, so, it's just a better way of conveying it across the roadway, so, that CFS is already going to that swale, it will just get there a little sooner because of the storm sewer now.
I'm saying, is it really getting to that swale today? Because if it's so bad at a storm, isn't overflowing the private property yards, it's not even getting into the collection system, it's just making its way down gradient-wise, but by actually improving the collection, so instead of overflowing people's lawns and backyards, it's now actually going into the storm system, that volume, that CFS is going to end up all in that swale, whereas today, maybe it doesn't.
No, it certainly does today.
Okay.
That's just, that's just how the topography was laid out for the original development, and if we could take that water out of folks' backyards, we would, but you can't change the existing topography at this point, so I have to work with what I have, and that's the drainage pattern as it is today.
Other questions for Chris?
Well, not for Chris, for the board.
Is there any other questions to Mr. Peterson?
You mentioned at the end of the endless, where it does enter into, like, can you explain a little bit more about how, you said it would basically avoid the erosion, like, with all that extra flow, so like, what does that look like leading right to, like?
Sure, so, you've probably seen these along roadways and things, at the termination point of a storm sewer, you have sort of a winged concrete end wall type structure, and that's designed to fan out the flow as it exits a concentrated pipe, and typically you'll find a length of riprap, which is used for energy dissipation beyond that, they range in particle size of like twelve-inch diameter to eighteen-inch diameter, so what that's doing is it's slowing down the flood wave of that water flowing through the stormwater, and then hopefully dissipating it to a much more reasonable flow rate by the time it reaches the pond, so, kind of avoid things like erosion and what have you with those types of devices.
So that would happen in both of those locations, and then just in terms of, like, obviously the design and everything, does the, knowing the recreational use of, like, does that change anything of the design as opposed to a stormwater management basin? Or were those considerations taken, obviously?
We considered that, we, I mean, we know the visual appeal and the recreational appeal of this, so we're not trying to detract from that in any way, we want to try to put in something that's going to be cohesive and work, you know, well for the residents, and certainly if we, if and when we get to a point where we design this, I think the input of residents is invaluable, so things like we've heard tonight about potentially creating a four-bay would be a low-cost option right, right adjacent to the pond to sort of create a little water quality area, I think that could certainly be done, like I said, a low-cost option, so we're still within the budget that we've mentioned in our feasibility study, but these are all things that we can consider at the time of design.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, if I could ask, I mean, I think you did a pretty good job of giving us an idea and a scope that we involved to mitigate problems in the community, has there been any thought, maybe it's the next step here, about grant funding opportunities that may be available to the township to be able to fund this project?
We discussed one of those options in our report, we do mention that, you know, we would want to pursue grant opportunities for this, because it certainly makes sense, it's a large undertaking, it's a lot of money to spend, and we understand that, so, certainly we would advise the township to pursue any grant opportunity available, the one alternative we brought up in the report was the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant, we've had a lot of luck with that and putting in stormwater systems improvements and things like that for similar municipalities.
Chris, just talking about grants, so, you know, obviously there's a lot of infrastructure money being made available from the federal government right now, I presume there's going to be a lot of folks raising their hand, saying, can we have a piece of that pie? We've got this approach that says, hey, you want to look at the entirety of what we're doing, you know, get reports for spring, early summer next year, while we look at the full picture, start thinking about how we tackle, you know, a thirty-million-dollar investment across this township, are we going to be missing out on some opportunities to get part of the infrastructure money, do we end up taking a year and eighteen months to get going with anything?
Potentially. I know that there's a multimodal grant that opens in March, that can be used for stormwater infrastructure, and we're not going to quite make that with the, the overall, you know.
So, would you recommend maybe, and I know this isn't necessarily what the board thinks is the right approach, but is it worth trying to get access to some of that funds by just having one project and saying, hey, if we get the money, we'll go with it, if we don't get the money, we'll keep working on the full pitch, what do you think?
Certainly, and you have an example before you tonight that could be used for a grant application.
Is this good enough to apply for a grant?
I would say so, yes, absolutely, it's probably one of the higher-level sketches that are submitted, it depends on the grant, yes.
It's not a grant, it's show ready. Yeah, it's true.
It has the grant.
And would we have to extend the money within three years?
Well, that doesn't worry me, what worries me is getting the money, and if we have a project that's going, then we can, you know, off, on, whatever else we can push on.
The grant, we're talking about show ready, or is it grants for March?
What, when, what's the deadline, March?
The multimodal?
Yeah.
Oh, that's when it opens, I'm trying to remember when it closes, it's probably a three-month period, I guess.
Usually at the end of May.
Okay. Yeah, because I know the PA Small Water and Sewer is out right now, so the deadline on that is like December twenty-first, but that's a yearly program, so you would see that every year.
It's like show ready, Jamie, Jamie, is that right?
I'm not that familiar with it, but I do know that, I am familiar that one of them, there's two multimodal, but one of them ends at the end of May, May thirty.
The PA Small Water and Sewer is not show ready, well, there's a few things you need, it's like a project description, you need a sketch of what you'd like to do, you need a commitment of funding, a letter from the local planning agency that says they're in agreement with what you're planning to do. they're in agreement with what you're planning to do, um, a construction cost estimate for that, um, but it's, and then a list of any permits that you think you might need, but it certainly doesn't have to be shovel-ready for that particular grant.
But that kind of failed over here. My, my specific question is more around the other structures from the federal government, and it gets allocated near March for the next 12, 24 months. And we're not, we miss out on the chance to get some of that because we're trying to get the full kit to pull together versus we've got something we could use now to have a piece of that because you could get our application in 2023. So I think, okay, you don't have to
We can look into that, yeah.
So you're looking at it, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a great question, and, um, and we can look into that more and get you a better answer.
Any other questions for Chris?
Well, maybe just, I just jump in here, part of this conversation that moving forward here, I'd like to take a look at what we can do and have staff-wise to be able to settle these practices or parts of, and also what the, the homeowners Civic Association there in North Hills could be doing to be a part of the solution here. And there is a mention in your report about putting rain barrels in and things of that nature, rain guards. That's something your association could let your folks know that this is something that can be done, it should be done, to help mitigate the problem. So I mean, it's gonna have to be a team effort here, not just the township carrying a load here. And I think it'd be good for you guys to understand that and, you know, bring what you can to the team.
So?
Does North Hills have an HOA?
It really does.
No. We are a voluntary civic association.
Okay. File questions? Chris, thank you very much for that one. Don't sit down too long, pick your own again.
Just a big, a very large tract, 25 acres or whatever it is, so that large culvert, though, that piece of property is owned by the civic association?
No, which are you talking about?
The pond, the big green one, the pond and
That's owned by the, uh, by the civic association, yes.
North Hill Civic Association, so who will be responsible for maintaining?
It's to be determined.
It has to be determined.
Okay. I just wanna be careful getting into doing work, um, on private property, because our neighborhood, we also have a stormwater pond and culverts, and so just be mindful, once we start doing these projects on private property, understand the rest of it is all public, fine, but then when other neighborhoods come that have these same, similar type stormwater issues, you know, gotta be careful.
Which prompted me, so do we, the, the replacement of the concrete above ground swale with this pipe, is there any improvement already there for that concrete swale, or is that?
Probably not. Probably not.
So there's gonna be a bunch of issues here relative to getting these on private property as well as who maintains what down the road.
And that's John's point of cooperation from the association and plot owners and all that.
Very good.
And these are, these are challenges I, I would assume the township's familiar with. We went through it with the Pine Valley Amelia Project, so, yeah, you do need buyer.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so moving along, we're, uh, onto agenda item number eight of 17. Presentation from Carol Engineering on Keystone Engineering on the results of the electrical study undertaken for the township municipal complex. So this is Dan, this is with Chris Peterson, our welcoming Kirsten Hayzick. Hayzick, okay, Ray, huh, from Keystone Engineering.
I'll just talk on this briefly since you already heard from me a lot here, but, um, just gonna briefly touch on the sketch plan we put together, and this is based on recommendations from Kirsten's report. Uh, before you have the conceptual layout for the electrical charging stations, the locations of the stations were depicted based on the input that we had from municipal staff as well as the host electrical panel that will have to feed those spots. Uh, the number of stations, uh, for each electrical panel can, that, that can be accommodated was based on, again, the recommendations from the electrical vehicle charging stations and solar feasibility report prepared by Keystone, um, which we mentioned Kirsten's here tonight, so she can talk more on that. Um, we, we've noted the, the uses of what we thought each of those stations would be based on the color coding you see on the left-hand side. So the purple was indicated to be administrative staff, blue would be police, public works, and administration would be green, and then general use would be the orange. There are two, uh, level three chargers shown in red, although it's a little difficult to see. Uh, one of those is by the police building, the other would be behind the building that we're in tonight. Um, but I think the key piece of information here is the actual number of stations that can be accommodated by the existing infrastructure in the electrical panels that you have in each building. Uh, so we have a number allocated, uh, with a little leader going to the approximate location of where the electrical panel is in each building. So that number is the important bit there. Um, the, the uses that we've noted for each of these spaces, uh, is not necessarily what that needs to be, it's whatever the township designates. Um, and certainly the location can change, but the locations were selected, um, based on, you know, knowing that it's more expensive to pick a spot that's farther from a supply panel. So we tried to pick locations that were central to where those particular spaces were being fed from. Uh, the one outlier there would be the one level three charger behind the police station. Uh, that was selected. It's a longer run, but it was selected because it's a more secure area for a level three charger. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kirsten, and she can talk a little bit more about the report and the questions she may have.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I'm Kirsten Hayzick from Keystone Engineering Group. Uh, I just wanna ask real quick from the board, is everyone familiar with the different types of level charging stations?
Yeah.
Level three? Okay, good, so you've read the report, excellent. Awesome. So with, with that in mind then, I do wanna talk a little bit about, um, some of the considerations that you have to decide on in order to proceed with this. So in general, the feasibility study was for charging stations, but also, um, solar feasibility as well. Um, so we looked at the, um, electrical infrastructure here and pretty much determined that your infrastructure is great and you do have spare capacity. Um, so I'll just touch on the solar real quick because that's an easy one, and then we'll get into the charging stations. Um, for the solar, we worked with another company, Solar Renewables, and they basically were able to model the roof structures and figure out what would make the most sense for putting on the solar panels. And they came up with a model that came to about, um, 28% of, of coverage of your current electric usage. So it's not a very high number, and a lot of that is just due to, um, not getting very good sun exposure on some of the roofs. So I did wanna just bring that to your attention. Um, they do offer some, uh, financing plans to, to do that if you do wanna proceed down that route. Um, and I know that there's definitely some, uh, government funding type, um, I guess, grant applications, that's the word I'm looking for, that are available to, to do solar renewables. So I don't wanna say no to solar, but I do wanna point out that it's, it's a very minimal coverage of your current electric usage. Um, and that does not take into account the projection of these solar, of the EV charging stations. So it'll be even less. Um, so I'll get into the charging stations. Uh, we looked at level two chargers, um, and we were looking at a 16 amp version versus a 32 amp version. I don't wanna get into too much of the electrical details, but basically a 32 amp version is a higher, uh, rate of consumption than the 16 amp version, but what that gets you is a less amount of charge time. Um, so in terms of charge time on the 32 amp version, level two charger, it's about 8.3 hours, uh, total charge time on a model, uh, a Tesla 2019 model, for example. Um, that creates to about 28.9 miles per hour, and you get about half of that, uh, using a 16 amp, um, charger. So it'll take twice the amount of time, half the amount of miles per hour. So that's something that you wanna definitely consider as you consider the options for these charging stations. Now, because of the higher consumption on a 32 amp level two charger, you can't get as many chargers on your system. So what we were looking at was if you went with the 16 amp level two charger, you would be able to do approximately 45 level two charging stations at this facility, um, just across all the buildings. And then if you were to go with the 32 amp charger with the lesser charge time, you'd be able to get about 22. Uh, so that's definitely something to consider. Um, the level three chargers, these are more robust, so they're fast chargers, and it's something that I think we were definitely looking at for the police building, um, and then something we were looking at for the general public, I believe, as well. So we, we did look at that, you do have the capability because you have 4A available here and you have three phases available here. Um, so it's definitely possible, um, and, and there are options that you can get with, with the level three, um, that I would recommend for, um, not having to cover the electric cost completely yourself. There are options to, to have a network and, and an app on there where you can charge to use that station. Um, and then there's also the RFID option where you have a card and it's basically employee access only, um, so that you're not opening that necessarily to the general public. Uh, so that's the general overview of what we looked at. We, we did do a, a general cost opinion, again, this is a feasibility study, so you'll see that 30% contingency on here as well. Um, we were looking at about $402,000, uh, to implement the charging stations, that's level two and level three, and I believe we based that on the 32 amp, uh, version, but I can confirm that, forgetting right now. Um, so generally, that's, that's where we stand. Ask away any questions?
Is this for the employees, that cost? Is that for the general public?
So, so that's a good question. Um, I believe that is for, um, I was using an RFID access. If it's an open access, it is cheaper, um, but then we, you don't have the, um, you wouldn't have anybody paying in, you'd still have to pay for the electric yourself if you did open access. So RFID would be an option where you can limit that to employees. I was looking at RFID and I was looking at networked in the, in that cost opinion. So network would, would be where you would have the app to, to charge somebody to use it.
So I just got a question going back to the solar capability. So I'm
Me too.
20%.
Me too.
Kind of hardwaking, but you said that's because of our sun exposure?
Correct.
So what options are there? Is it just because of the direction that our roof is facing?
Yeah. No, it, it is definitely because of the direction that the roofs are facing that are open, um, because you do have, um, some HVAC units up there, so that does take up some of the space that we couldn't use for the solar. Um, but yeah, it's, it's generally like you want south-facing roofs because you want the sun to be exposed to it the whole day. And if you don't get that, then it's, it's really not gonna be efficient enough.
Right. So it's $400,000 for the 16 and 33.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, good. So $400,000 was, was the more expensive option with the 16 amp chargers.
More chargers.
More chargers, correct. And, and, yeah, and what you're, what you're seeing there in the terms of the cost difference is just how much more conduit and wire you would need to wire into these.
It's actually 28%, it's less than 28% of solar when you start getting the hookups.
Correct, correct.
Your calculation where your, and your cost assessment is based upon 16 amp and 32 amp, but it was based upon a Tesla, uh, Model S 2019, which had a 50 KWH lithium battery. I just did a quick Google check last night just for the heck of it, to see what these vehicles that are coming out now or in the next year or two, they're all looking at like a nine, double the capacity, like a 99 KWH. You know, that's the Ford's coming out, with the Chevy's coming out. My concern is, and I wanna hear what your opinions about this, if we did go with the 16 amp chargers, would they be obsolete by the time we install them? Given the volume, the time that it takes in order to charge, you know, a 99 or 98 KWH battery?
So, so I would never say a charger would be obsolete, um, because if you think about a level one, which I, I think I may have touched on a little bit in the report, a level one is something that you would have at your house, it would be a general receptacle like in this room where you plug in and you triple-charge. So I would never say it's obsolete. Um, for a building like this, you're not a gas station, so I wouldn't expect you to be charging a vehicle in 20 minutes. I mean, it's incredibly expensive to afford that type of unit, and that's the level three unit, um, to, to have that available for the general public as 10, 15 units, it's, it's incredibly expensive. Um, so I definitely wouldn't say a 16 amp version is obsolete, but, but you're right, you bring up an important point, that, you know, you do have to weigh the charge time. Um, in my opinion, it's, it's a nicety to add these here, um, for the general public use, to be able to just plug in while you're at an appointment or, or while you're here tonight at a board meeting, um, and, and get a little trickle charge on your vehicle. So I wouldn't say they're obsolete, but it's not ideal.
But I just wanted to kind of step back, come in and think about why we commissioned this study and what, what we really wanna get out of any investment here at the town complex. So the SEC and Henry's here, and I don't know if you can talk later, we, we said, one of the big things that we do to control greenhouse gas emissions, one is our electrical consumption is fossil fuel source today. Hopefully perhaps one day we'll be sourcing from, you know, renewable energy sources, that's the journey we're gonna be on. The other thing is, uh, emissions from our vehicles, so police fleet, administrative fleet, and the public works fleet. And we knew that what we wanted to do was say, well, how can we start the journey of converting those vehicles over to electric vehicles that are both feasible today and potentially feasible down the road, knowing that a lot of heavy duty trucks are just not at that point yet. But, you know, it's exciting to see that there's a lot of vehicles coming out, like John mentioned, even higher capability with batteries and distance. My personal view on this, and hope I can persuade the board, is the goal here is to put in chargers that are suitable for the fleet that we operate, and if there's an all but extra that we can have available for public charging, fine, but that's not the drive for what we're trying to create here. The drive is to convert our vehicles to electric where possible, reduce, you know, as part of sustainability initiative and be fit for the future.
Yeah.
So I think we really should be looking at only the level three and the 32 amp chargers. The level one, not gonna be the need to staff probably the public works team, and we may, as we evaluate further, determine that what we really need is more level threes, well, not level twos, but we need that capability for police vehicles, for public works vehicles, and they have service requirements and needs that are gonna demand a higher capability for charging the 16 amp service.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah, and, and with that thought in mind, you know, I don't think that there's anything pressing to say you have to do all of these all at once. You know, I think that it's a good place to start, to get the level threes that you anticipate needing, and then these are things that can just happen over time. You have the capacity, you can keep that capacity planned for these, um, or adjust it as you need to in the future, but there's no, there's no pressing need to do every single one of these at the same time.
So I'm gonna ask Dave and Henry to comment on the study. I mean, Dave, you're from a user perspective, what are you feeling like seeing this, that is new information to you, is interesting, doesn't fit, does fit?
You know, we have the, the two level two to a property. Uh, as we begin to break war between the police vehicles there, the level three chargers for the fast recharge, I see being more of a need than the level twos.
Police vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, if we have a detective out on scene for something for a couple hours, you know, the car's running, they're using it, he needs to come back, that vehicle needs to be recharged quickly, can't sit here for a few hours while it's getting recharged. So the level threes, I think are the low-hanging fruit.
My only input to that would be if the vehicle stays here overnight, it is also nice to be able to triple-charge that overnight.
Yeah, but the, the old car detectives take their cars home.
Okay.
So, so you're, you're running into times where
Yeah.
Or, you know, they, they may platoon, have two on one car.
Yeah.
So, you know, the, the fast recharge is a great capability.
Yeah, the police need the opportunity to charge quickly, unless they also keep their cars running, so they're gonna be burning through.
Right, and you also run into, uh, when we're doing hurricanes, uh, any sort of other things, the, the code efficient vehicles and all, that, you know, they may, they may get out all day during building inspections, we can hit a storm tonight, you know, we have people out those vehicles looking at storm damage and all. You know, we have people out those vehicles looking at storm damage in ours. So, you know, we don't, we're not a ninety-five operation.
I think the frequency of the police using is going to be increased too, because they're going to, they have a lot more equipment on their computers. They're going to take a lot more juice. So the frequency of them using will be more so than the other, it's also a couple of worse.
Yeah.
One of the questions that I would have is, how many cars would we take home at night and be charged home? You said that detectives would be taken.
And we have detectives for?
More than that. These are all great questions. We don't have that level of information.
You're ability, right?
There's another level of effort now to take this, that it's quite silly to me, Dave, to be honest, but there's more capacity here than I expected.
I'm sorry.
Because based on what your thoughts around, you know, how capitalized there, now that we've done studies, like, hey, we've got more in the business. Boy, I was thinking we weren't getting much before we needed another feeder and that doesn't sound like it's the case.
I was worried about that too in the beginning.
Well, you know our electrical provision. If we have to put more panels in, we just don't have any more wall space.
But that's what I was concerned about. But looking into your PICO consumption over the past year, I mean, that jacked pretty well with what I was able to calculate of actual usage here. Because your total connected load, yeah, it's up there, but you're not using your total connected load day in and day out. You're actually never even reaching that peak, so.
So just to frame up where we are, we have more work to do. We have, as a board, directed the preliminary budget to have up to two hundred thousand dollars of potential capital investment project for progressing this, as it can do installation, design installation in twenty-twenty-three. Whether that's what we do or not will depend on this next level of work around. Is it a level three? Is it just one system? Where's it located? We don't want to put in something that's oversized today when we're three years away from police vehicles that are capable of doing this. So there's a kind of whole coming together again kind of thing. But we are interested in moving forward with the project. What that project is going to be needs more definition, I think is where we are.
Okay.
Sound reasonable?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I did just want to add one more thought on the solar end of things. They do have some, I guess, financing options. And there is an option similar to what you have set up with PICO, where you don't own the transformer that you're using. You're paying a general service fee to PICO to use that transformer, and then they'll replace it as needed if things fail. There's a similar financing option that they have there for the solar system. They call it a PSA, where basically you're paying a general service fee to an investor who's paying for your solar system. And there is an option for you to buy out, but you could just continue on that path. So at least that's a nice thing where you don't have to buy outright if you do want to still consider the solar.
Well, to be honest, I think we should still do work on the solar. Twenty-eight percent is not nothing. Quite a chunk of what we're doing today. I know we're going to be adding to it with these other demands, but it's all about, it's the economic case there for it. It's quite a lot of payback a day. Everything's electricity prices are going down based on fossil fuels in the next five years, and I don't. Probably gone the other way quite substantially. Certainly, if you look at Europe, they're in a hell of a bunch of this. So it may be a five-year payback by the time we get to figuring out we want to do something. So I certainly would support the recommendation, I think, that the SAC made, which is to continue to work with the actual solar providers, the company you mentioned and others, competitive purposes, to see what makes sense. I mean, it looks to me like two of the buildings are more advantageous than the other two. So the public works building, the police, that's more wet footage. That helps simplify the design, the class, et cetera. So there's some work that we could look at.
Agreed. Okay, great.
Well, there's some questions here from the audience, I think, to the, have you had?
Yeah, township's a lot itself, just of the ways. You can go with freestanding systems too.
That's true.
And there may be property that township owns. There may be more advantages to put a freestanding system on.
Yeah, that's fair. We didn't look at it. Solar renewables would be happy to. They did bring that up to me, and thank you for making that.
But I was looking at that. I mean, it's not going to be as photogenic as it is on top of our buildings. It also might be more cost effective.
Yeah.
And to the point of working with an investor, they get the tax advantages. I mean, you know, township doesn't pay taxes, so you don't get the thirty percent off the top. But an investor would, plus there's SRA credits that they get, there's other things that make more advantages for them, that may solve your problem or you may get to the goal you're looking for just as easily as trying to do it yourself. And the other thing with the charging systems, no matter what size you go with, make sure that the infrastructure you put in the ground is sized much higher. Because the sixty amp, maybe it's sixty amp now, but two years from now, it'll be hundred amp chargers out there. So if you put cable in the ground with number eight, you're going to want number twos in the ground, and you don't have to go through all that. And I hope that whoever designs this is taking the data and that path, because it'll save you a lot of money after they go.
Yeah. Great, great.
Good point. With this economy, you can pull new wires, right?
You don't want to pull the wire. Why pay the wire twice?
No.
But my view?
Looking at the PICO bills, I see that there's a separate bill for the admin building, separate one for the streets building. Streets building is the better building to put it on. So if we just isolate and look at the streets building and the energy bills for just that building, I mean, just put solar on that building, maybe we're saving eighty percent.
Yeah.
If you look at it that way.
That's fair. I did not ask that specific question of them. I basically gave them a combined number. I gave them the PICO ones and they had to do that.
Because that's the way they get.
We could answer the design so that when the sun is shining, we'll blast, we get the maximum savings. So if that's more than the public works building is needing, we need it to offset whatever the admin is using at the same time. So it's not that big a side. They'll be able to design it so that the balance is there between utilizing everything we generate versus what we're applying here, so.
To that point, even if you are producing more than you need, they would plan to do net metering, so.
Which is fine, except the sooner or later, PICO is not going to give us the same rate for what we give them versus what the charges.
That is accurate.
So I'd rather use everything we produce and then ask for more.
Yeah.
It's part of the discussion about where we need to go with this. I agree, we need to have more thinking here. Part of that puzzle, I think, or piece of it is, is figuring out whether or not the roofs themselves can handle solar array panels. I mean, at this point, you're not able to make that call, is that correct?
That's correct. I do not have that data available. That's something that solar renewables could provide an engineer to inspect and confirm that the panels would.
So you recommend that that was something that we should?
Yes, if we want to pursue with doing the solar, we definitely want to do a structural analysis of the roofs.
Because obviously, if the rooftop can't handle the load, then that kind of takes an option off of it.
Yeah.
Or be expensive to operate it, but not be.
Yeah.
So do we need to take a motion here about the?
I don't think we need a motion, because we just directed staff to continue to work on this project through the sustainability committee. So, you know, Jamie's here and Dave's here, so we're just asking to continue to progress two hours, like John said, maybe the next step on the solar is to get the roofs evaluated. And then this is probably a project, smaller project team, we need to start with internally to say what you really want in terms of charges and then bring these down to the perfect point and say, hey, what would this system look like? You know, meaning extra, whether it's a level three or how many, whatever you guys would say this is what we need for the first project and, you know, say, we can decide this kind of thing. Sound like, that makes sense?
Yeah, I like your idea about being able to do this piece bill. I mean, we may decide to put in some fast chargers right now. But then, as the vehicle fleet gets changed over, that might be five years down the road, and then we'll add to that, which at that point there, like Steve's saying, if what we install today will probably be obsolete or purposeless. It might be a better approach.
On the Ford job. Okay, are there any other questions for this?
We're running out of time over here.
Let's go.
Very good. Just a quick question. For a normal electric police car, when the battery goes bad, would you just replace the whole vehicle?
No. What I'm hearing now is the batteries, first of all, are much better designed and the whole gigafactory concept is now, you can take that battery back and replace it if necessary, so.
Is your battery thirty thousand dollars or something?
They're not going to be that kind of cost. The whole thing will become closed loop because there's so much material that's going to be valuable in these batteries. I was just reading this the other day about GM trucks and everything. It's going to become, just the throwaway thinking is not going to be the ultimate solution for this because those batteries are too expensive, especially as they get the density up and, you know, the capability and the range up. And the ten year, they're all done in ten years. That's not what we're seeing now with some of the new batteries.
So the cost of these batteries are coming down?
Cost is coming down, it's not a lot because of the shortage of the metals that go into it, because there's no industry being set up to get it as quickly as the demand is increasing. All these things are, you know, this is what we're all good at. Does that make sense to you? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it is on to agenda item number nine, presentation from Westchester area Clean Energy Future. So Henry, if you just give a quick status update, right? We're not having a thirty-minute lecture on clean energy, are we?
Oh, I think we should do that.
You've been reading all week. I anticipate.
I'll do my best to keep it short. Henry Alexander, I've lived in eleven oh one third alone, member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Westchester area Clean Energy Future. And before I start that, I must say I'm very encouraged by the key stone support because it looks like the energy, the electricity is there, and it's just a question of getting the right mix of low speed and high speed charging is good for the fleet. So I'll try to be brief. I'm a member of the steering committee of the Westchester area Clean Energy Future. As Melanie Vile is also, who's chair of the SEC. We were established by the Westchester area Council of Governments at the conclusion of the Westchester area one hundred percent renewable energy transition study completed in February twenty twenty. And as part of the completion of that study, the COG did three things. They told each municipality they were on their own for determining what was individually best in transition to clean energy, clean renewable energy. They set up a small group that would explore the potential for municipal line power purchase agreements for all of the municipal electricity that would be obtained from a hundred percent solar. And then the volunteers were given the charge of forming a group to reach out to the wider community concerning the transition to clean renewable energy. And this became the Clean Energy Future. I'd like to first address the efforts regarding the power purchase agreement. The group designated to investigate the power purchase agreement ultimately centered on a power purchase agreement with Constellation Energy and obtained an agreement of the five of the six municipalities on a trigger price for a long-term contract and the resulting construction of a new solar generating facility to provide the attached electricity along with other people who would be involved in that solar project. Had we been six months earlier, we may have been able to close a deal. But the war in Ukraine and permitting issues with PJM interconnection brought most solar projects to a halt. Had we been able to finalize the process, we could have reduced the township operation emissions of greenhouse gases by sixty percent as soon as that solar facility was built. This is because sixty percent of the township greenhouse gas emissions are due to the use of electricity. As we would have, and we would have saved a lot of money because the price of electricity and energy in general has risen since that time. Power purchase agreement is still possible in the future. Regarding the mandate for municipalities to transition to clean renewable energy, Westchester Township has done an excellent job of preparing for the transition. It set up an SAC, part of whose mandate is to consider the transition to clean renewable energy. It experimented with purchase of hybrid EVs and full battery powered EVs for the police department and installed three EV charging stations. And then, as we just heard, it has conducted an EV charging stations and solar feasibility study report. If the measure considered in this report, plus a modest purchase of renewable energy credits were implemented, the emissions of greenhouse gases from the municipal operations could be reduced by almost half. And that's in perhaps eight, ten years. And if at the same time, the federal government achieves the minimum level of cleanup of electricity grid mandated under the Inflation Reduction Act, the township would reduce its emissions over that period to the early twenty-thirties by at least sixty-seven percent. This is the level of reduction that is, that if accomplished by all, would achieve the progress necessary to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. Finally, the third council of government recommendation was the council of governments was tasked the Clean Energy Future with encouraging residents and businesses to make similar transitions to clean renewable energy. The Clean Energy Future has a steering committee with a representative or representatives from all six municipalities that meet weekly to plan the activities. With the approval of the council of government, the Clean Energy Future has established a website, WCACleanEnergy.org, that provides information to businesses and residents on home weatherization, purchase and charging of EVs, area locations of EV chargers, the installation of solar arrays, and many more topics. It has conducted surveys of public interest in EVs and solar arrays and found real interest in both. And it has coordinated with PICO on promotion of home energy audits. The Clean Energy Future reported back to the council of governments at their July twenty-first meeting and asked for their advice and guidance. One piece of advice that the council of governments provided was that in addition to providing information on how the community can transition to efficiently clean energy, the Clean Energy Future should explain why this transition is needed in ways the community could understand and find motivating. In response, we make the following observations. In our township, we will avoid progressively more flooding, hot summers, more erratic weather. We will have significantly cleaner air. Our community will be more resilient and energy sufficient. It will protect us from the threats of our energy security and will ensure the strength of our local businesses and industries. We hope that this information will inspire the residents and businesses of our community to take progressive steps toward efficiency and clean energy in their lives. It is a welcome relief that our national government has finally adopted legislation to speed the transition of safe, clean renewable energy. One of the principal goals of the Clean Energy Future will be to translate this national mandate into the funding of local energy transition projects in our area. We look forward to working with the COG and with individual municipalities on this. As we did with the council of governments, we would like to ask you what advice and guidance you may have as to how the Clean Energy Future can facilitate? what advice and guidance you may have as to how the Clean Energy Future can facilitate the transition our communities to efficient use of clean renewable energy. Please give us your thoughts either now or after you've considered this presentation. We will be continuing to report back to the Council of Governments and seek their advice. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Henry. Boy, questions, but Henry, about the Clean Energy Future Forum?
Just a little quick, if you can provide research and guidance for any grant credit opportunities made available by the recent federal legislation, namely the Inflation Reduction Act, that would be really great. If you could do something like that.
We're working on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Henry, I mean, I know we had aspirations for the Clean Energy Forum to be able to connect with the community. It seems to be probably connecting with people already very interested in doing something. Is the reach getting wider than it has been in the past? Would the only class try to expand beyond the touch point you already have?
We're working on it, but with a volunteer group and limited funding, we are working as fast as we can.
I mean, is there an opportunity for you through the Council of Governments to show the kind of feasibility study we've done for this complex in some other ways? We're trying to move forward and motivate some of the other township complexes and what, how are you going to accomplish?
I think this is a model, I really do. This is the first, this is the first time I have, I do modeling for, I enjoy modeling and I do it. This is the first time I've modeled actual reductions, not, well, we could do this, these are the strategies we could use. These are actual reductions we can achieve for municipal complexes and for the township energy uses. And the energy uses for the municipality are the major, are the, basically the only GHT emissions of the municipality.
Anyone else have questions, Henry?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Anyone else, Doug has a question?
Doug? Thank you for your presentation. I have two questions for you, Henry. Do you and the SEC consider the use of safe nuclear power as clean energy? And have you determined the power load of the township? How much we get from a hundred-foot reactor and from each block which produce no?
Well, the, there, I guess you divided it into two questions. One, the existing nuclear plants, and should we keep them going for an extended period of time until renewable energy is able to ramp up? The second question is, should we have, should the country be working to to design and build new nuclear plants, perhaps on a different model than the existing nuclear plants? And what I have seen is that the lead time for that is ten to fifteen years. And we need to move more quickly than that in order to, to ramp up clean energy. So from a standpoint of nuclear, yes, keep the nuclear plants existing going for as long as they can be safely and concentrate on wind and solar.
So you do consider nuclear power as clean?
I consider it's not producing GHGs. It has its own attendant problems and that's open to debate.
Other questions for Henry? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number ten, Public Hearing and Possible Adoption of Ordinance Number Six, Two Thousand Twenty Two Regarding Various Amendments to the Westchester Township Zoning Ordinance Pertaining Conferences, Independent Living Facilities, and Parking Requirements. Kristin, anyone who is the lead for this?
Sure, I'll start because this is a public hearing and had to be advertised. We did advertise on October twentieth and October twenty fifth. I sent a copy of the ordinance to the daily local Winchester County Law Library for public inspection. The county planning commission reviewed the letter, assuming reviewed the ordinance and produced a letter of October twenty sixth. And your own planning commission reviewed this at its meeting on October eleventh and recommended the board adopt the amendments. Jamie did a nice job of explaining when this was brought to before, explaining the purpose of these amendments in her memory end of September twenty second. And the county planning commission letter, if you look at that, that identifies specifically what we're doing. Adding a definition of fence, deleting independent living facilities from the uses that are allowed in the R three district, and then deleting the respective area bulk requirements and design standards for that particular use, amending the requirements for fences, deleting the, we're really just restructuring where the parking requirements are for, we had changed the definitions, we don't use the term eating and drinking place anymore, we use the term restaurants. And so we're just, that should have been changed when we did that. And then changing or separating out the parking requirements for independent living facilities and assisted living. So that's the summary of what the ordinance is accomplishing. Have any answering questions?
Kristin, on the parking requirements, there were a couple of specific previous requirements based on table or without table service. Seems like the new standard is a smaller number of parking spaces, is that right? It's one per hundred square feet, which would be ten per thousand square feet. Previously, there were fifteen and twenty per thousand square feet.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
What's the basis for the reduction then?
Yes, the basis was the research that was done to the neighboring municipalities in the Westchester area and of similar size all had a requirement of what we placed in, which is the one to one hundred square feet.
Okay.
The fifteen per one thousand seemed to be an outdated requirement.
Okay, now, same question on the mini warehouse self-storage facility. The basis for one space per ten thousand square feet, is it similar?
So that is a little bit different. The only other place that I found an example of a requirement for parking for a self-storage mini warehouse was, was that requirement. That was also a discussion with a proposed self-storage for another parcel, the Quality Inn parcel. And so just in talking with the developer, getting that side of the need, and then also just the only other comparable was, was at that level. So one per thousand.
Is the board have other questions, do you have Jamie or Kristin?
I have a question on the fencing. Apparently, the lobby issue there, those fences were being installed with the township's right of way. Can you give us a definition of what a right of way is? And is that be related to the particular street in which they live?
Yeah, the right of way is, well, depends on each development. So depend on right of way, for example, Paley Pike, that's defined with, based on whatever Paley Pike width is. So a township road in a new development now typically require fifty foot right of way. And that's deeded to the township in fee simple. So I think some of the issues were, for example, in front of my house, if I build a fence, I, my, the carway is what, thirty-three feet wide? But the right of way is fifty feet. So people were not getting permits and putting up a fence that was within the distance between the thirty-three feet and the fifty feet. But that's township land, so township really owns fifty feet. They could put utilities there, sidewalks there, they could store and drain sewers there. So you want to make sure that the fences aren't being within, some people don't realize that the township's either ownership and fee simple or right to use is bigger than what the carway is.
Right, so the property owner may own that property, but be tested by the nature?
Yeah, subject to the township's right to use it, correct.
And how about an individual, so it's fifty feet now for all roads that are township dedicated or does it?
It depends, it depends on each road, yeah.
It depends.
Depends.
We have rightways of fifty feet, forty feet, thirty-three feet. And the only way to find out for sure is to call the office and we'll look it up.
But for new roads going in, in new developments, we require fifty foot, yeah.
But that requirement, actually, according to the changes we're talking about here, is only going to apply to, to those within the, a through line?
No.
Where is this for, also for fencing in the required front yard? Looking at our opposed ordinance here, this is for fences.
Well, the goal is to make sure that there's a zoning permit that's issued for every fence. And a building permit and a zoning permit is issued for fences of greater than eight feet in height.
Okay, I see that in section four here. But in section G, fences number one, it doesn't say anything about it can't be built within the existing right of way.
Well, that's, that's in the definition of front yard. So your, the definition of front yard, that's a defined term. So your front yard is not going to include what is the right of way.
It's defined somewhere else?
Yeah, say it again.
It's defined somewhere else?
Yeah, yeah, defined, there's many definitions you have to look at when you're looking at a zoning regulation. So when it says fences may be erected in the required front yard, front yard is a defined term in the zoning ordinance. And that's going to be for the?
And that specifies the right of way within that definition?
Yes.
And any fences that are existing now would be grandfathered, you wouldn't have to comply with this?
Well, no, fences that are in the right of way, we have the right to tell them you take down. You can't have a fence in the right of way. And the goal of this was really to make sure that they get a zoning permit, to make sure that we're seeing before they put a fence up, to tell them to take fence down, to make sure that they're getting proper approvals for where they want to put the fence.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is someone going to make a motion to adopt ordinance number six, Two Thousand Twenty Two?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tina, answer a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Robert. Are there any board questions or comments on the motion? Or any public comment or questions on the motion? Very good, ready to take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number, he just beat us along. Discussion Regarding Proposed Text Amendment to the Westchester Township Zoning Ordinance In Order to Permit Assisted Living Facilities and Mini Warehouse Self-Storage Facilities By Conditional Use in the C three zoning district. And this would have been under Chris, Jamie, you want to take us to, walk us through this?
Yeah, so before the board, it said proposed ordinance to amend the C three zoning district to add assisted living facilities for mini warehouse self-storage facilities as used as permitted by conditional use. September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, board heard presentation from a potential developer for the Quality Inn and Suites, that's nine forty-three South High Street. And the proposal included the redevelopment of the site with an assisted living facility and mini warehouse self-storage facility. Neither use is permitted currently, so the amendment was required to add them and the board decided it would be through conditional use at that time. So the applicant submitted the attached amendment. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Township Planning Commission on October eleventh and recommended for adoption. If, just before the board tonight is to decide, you know, whether to authorize to submit this to Chester County Planning Commission, what their review and comment.
Thank you, Jane. Does the board have any comments on the draft ordinance provisions? I have two comments. On the first section here, it refers to subsection D, subsection M, and subsection E, but the descriptions there don't match the EF and D on D and F on the other side. So it says subsection D relating to what coverage is correct, and then subsection F related to building setback line, which is now, oh, it was out, it's even now, isn't it? That's what's changed?
Yeah.
Okay, so forget that one. My other question is the, the hundred-foot minimum, I think it's this one, the yard or the setback fifty feet from any building. The, the intention here is to potentially have a four-story building on this wall. I would like to see consistency between the setback for a four-story here versus the South Walnut Street to be same, the same as what we agreed for the PUC overlay, where we had a certain setback based on building height for a residential street. I forget what it was, but it may be more than fifty feet. Do you remember, Kristin, we said that the PUC overlay was at a height of fifty feet, they had to be seventy-five feet from the residential street or whatever. I'd like to see the consistency between what we agreed there with the minimum building setback here. So that if we, if the building is four stories high, the residents of South Walnut Street are going to be, have a big distance potential they have to take. Because when I looked it on Google Maps, it looks to be about fifty feet between the back of Quality Inn and South Walnut Street.
So we would have to, we're going to have to look into that and then, and then make sure that it's either consistent or make a recommended change.
So, and is it if it goes above thirty-five feet, up to fifty feet, you want to see that increased setback?
Yes.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I can, I remember doing that for the PUC, I still have to go back and remind myself of that, that I did, yeah.
And just for clarity, this specification of the parking spaces for independent living facility is just to make sure we have a definition for that? It doesn't, there's no way here, you can't even say that independent living is allowed to use C three?
No.
Right, and actually, I thought this was in the last ordinance, I apologize.
No, but it's actually just in this one because we haven't changed anything, anything about the independent living facility parking regulations. We did separate and change assisted living facility, which previously was not.
Yeah.
So, and we're just showing that they're, that they're separated and that they're different.
They're different, right.
And so the same question again around assisted living facility. What was the input you caught to give the half space per dwelling unit? Was that from?
This was directly from the Quality Inn, the potential developer.
Do we have any other reference point to say that's adequate from other assisted living facilities?
I don't have any backup research that I did for that. But I, I don't know of any regulations that specifically pulled that up either. Look, I didn't find an example, but I did research and look, I didn't have any examples that I could, that pulled it down like we are right now.
I wonder if the IT, you would have anything?
Probably.
Yeah, we might want to look at that, just, I mean, I see it's here, but it might be something to look at, just.
Is the way you say line?
I'm sorry, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I actually just asked the traffic engineer this the other day, whether or not they have information on real assisted living facilities and what the parking demands are. Might not be able to look at that.
We might, just from a case, anecdotal, personal observation, if you go drive past some of the Sunrise facilities during the area, there seems to be more parking than they need, but, you know, I'm only going to pass certain times of day, I just don't know. But if you could have a basis here that we feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
It was a half a spot, is that for scooter?
Per dwelling unit, per.
For a half a scooter or, I mean?
No, 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 meaning that you look at the number of dwelling units, if there's two hundred dwelling units, you only need a hundred parking spaces.
Oh, half, half total now, I see.
Come on up, tell us all about assisted living, should we live a lot?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cameron, and let me identify myself, I guess, Sam Parentini, the developer. Yeah, the, the traffic estimates are point, around point four, we went with point five, just to be conservative.
And can you say the estimates, where are those estimates coming from, Sam?
Yeah, from the?
IT?
The IT, yeah.
I think there are two manuals, I actually just asked, like I said, asked the traffic engineer on a different issue, and he said there are two standards, the Urban Institute, I think, Urban Transportation Institute? There's two manuals that he said he could go to, to evaluate whether, what the true parking demand is.
And, and we left the higher estimate and being able to come in and work with the board and we wanted, everybody wanted to reduce it further than we could, but we got them.
I'll try to get that there for him, just to.
Any other questions from the board?
So Sean, one thing, if we, we'll make these edits and bring it back to on the team, so.
I think we'd like to close the loop, so I see what was said around the PUC, consistency, the overlay, the district for that. Now that's just confirmed that our own basis for accepting the point five. Now that's just confirmed that our own basis for accepting point five is good. And then we'll, we can visit this on fifteen.
Okay.
All right, so now we're on to, I think I was all for this one, right? Now, good questions, or should the, the public, do you want to comment on that?
No, Bill's up for it.
Oh, they are?
Good news. Doug has a question.
I'll have a second, let's. Yeah, so you're not voting on this?
No, no, we're just.
It wasn't advertised.
May, may I ask a question that you may be commenting on? Generally, I'd support the redevelopment as proposed as long as the, the concerns are addressed. And then just to, to real quick question, and we may have discussed this before, uh, for Rick. Why, why weren't, uh, self-storages and, um, assisted livings allowed in C-three before? Was it because they just weren't there or it just wasn't considered? And if, are there any other C-three areas in the township that could be negatively impacted by doing this?
So, and on the latter question, we addressed that when we first discussed this whole changes of what would be allowed by conditional use. And we reviewed it and agreed that previously there was not an impact with.
So there's a downside to other areas?
No. What was your first question that I found?
Why doesn't include in that C-three area?
Yeah, so.
None of the people around the board that they can't answer that.
Why, and it's always not, you know, we don't have history knowledge there.
Is there something about assisted livings or, uh, self-storages that were banned for C-three?
Although potentially evaluated in the context of what was allowed in C-three now, so this was okay as additional use. And we could incorporate it as a conditional use for C-three, so we evaluated as the.
Just stay basic, basic.
What, in terms of what is allowed and not allowed?
Maybe back then, they just weren't doing that. And now they're in demand and we're doing them and it's okay, doesn't negatively impact any of that.
Mr. Tarantini, I, I have one request, since you have a little bit of time for you now, fifteen. I mean, you presented conceptual design of kind of footprint of this building and the footprint of the self-storage. Now we've got some criteria here specific to the bulk and area requirements and green space. I'd like to, if you don't mind, if it's possible to create an actual, this is what the footprint would look like of what you would be proposing to potentially build now with these, this zoning allowed, do you understand? Because if it's all conceptual, it looks like this, it's going to occupy this footprint, here's the parking, here's a little block for the self-storage. What would it look like given these specific requirements now for the, the, you know, the building of it?
Yes, and, um, let me, let me show you, we can do something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just not, it's just a sketch kind of thing, just so we can see what it looks like in terms of the distance and everything else.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
If you'd like to know what the ITU trip rates are, I can give them to you right now.
Go ahead.
Per bed in a weekday PM peak hour is zero point two-nine and AM peak hour is zero point one-eight.
These are parking spaces?
Yeah.
There it goes.
Dwelling unit equals one bed.
One bed, yeah, so they're, they probably would be more insufficient.
We don't have time to figure out the overlay distance. I guess, let's find out what that is.
Yeah, and also, because I don't know, you only want that from Walnut Street, you don't want it from two, two two.
No, exactly, probably be further towards two two than push back against Walnut Street, but what's the worst? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? Very good, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Tarantini. Uh, we're on to number twelve. Continued discussion regarding responses to the request for proposal for independent auditing services for West Ocean Township for possible awarding of a contract. So this is a continuation of, uh, the discussion at the last meeting where we'd asked for some additional information from the three peers that submitted proposals. And we did get responses from, from those companies and the information was provided to the board and in the packet. Is the board satisfied that their questions that they raised have been answered in the responses?
Yes.
Let me see this. We readjust the issue that should have worked and they were understanding of it all. So I think they addressed the questions, and I think they answered.
Okay. So at this point, if the question has been answered to the board's satisfaction, are we ready to have a discussion and, uh, a potential motion for approval of an audit for going forward?
Resection.
What, yeah, yeah, good. So what's, what's your view of the proposals, Robin?
I did some work on the, the onesky. And I also read something from Christine where there was some kind of negative relationship. I don't know if that was specifically too, because she wasn't around recently. And I worked with Barbequain when I first came on board. And I've been able to see their, their work. I think they have, um, good ways of working with each other with the township. I think it was the first time that I had a chance to be involved with them. I asked the first question, this time it was Jean. And Jean was the person who was pretty much, um, the director. And, um, I've had, had opportunities to see how they worked, how they informed me. And Q and I were doing some of that work, and I think they highly have them.
So you're in favor of awarding the RP, uh, awarding the, the audit service to Barbequain, is what you're saying?
Yes, because I also looked into, um, BBD this morning. Their photo, I'm sure they're good as well. That's another thing I looked into, and it was really hard for me to kind of understand what their organization was like. So those are the things I looked into.
Other, other comments from board members?
Yeah, I was, um, I always like to switch it around a little bit. Maybe Barbie was good, and I always liked somebody else to look at somebody else's work and try something else. I've seen this in the past where we think everything is going smoothly and then you get another company and they find some things that they didn't find. So I'm okay with switching it and not using Barbequain and see how another company does. And maybe have your contract, see how they do. But the only clause I would like to put into a legal perspective is that if their savings are in there, that we can continue upon getting out of the contract before the one-year term in the event they don't need our contracts, just to be a.
You have that, it's a valid form, it's a valid form in the engagement letter, you have to.
Right, but how would you do that if you have to get a notice done?
I know.
You're putting somebody of this.
If the law is forward or you're bad, you need to bring someone in and pay a bunch of money, you're getting done that hard, that's the problem.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So my question is, as far as contract term length, what are we looking at with anything?
That's, that's negotiated.
Those are every.
I don't know what you put in your RP, but.
Uh, if we're gonna switch, I would suggest.
Reappoint them.
Yeah, I would suggest that we're gonna switch companies, we just do a one-year contract and see how they.
I agree.
Yeah.
Sean?
I would, I tend to agree with Jean, I think another set of eyes would be worthwhile. I'd still have a problem with, with what happened down at Kennedy Square with Barbequain. I'd like to see another, you know, switch horses here, I don't know. I think that would be a good thing for the township, you know, if you're asked to look at it. I, uh, BBD, I understand that they're, gave a low number. That in and of itself should not disqualify them. I mean, I think as a board, it's our job to be overseers of the taxpayer dollar. If we can get an adequate, fair service for a lower cost, then I think we should pursue that. And it's, you know, and I, I would agree also that we should keep it to a one-year contract and then see how they work out. So my feeling is to go with the lowest bidder here, BBD. And they just could be hungry, they're like, they, they've done quite a few work with the other municipalities in the, in our area. Granted, they may not be quite our size, but they certainly are familiar with doing government audits of townships. And they apparently, they have the strength on hand to be able to handle it. And I think their answer to the questions that were addressed to them by Chris Bayshore, I think, shows that they have a fair idea of what's going to be required of them, so my feeling is to go with BBD.
Okay, so did you want to recommend?
I, I didn't, but I had one, which was BBD.
Okay, so there are two BBDs about ten, Ashley?
So I'm very much with John on this one as well. I think that giving BBD an opportunity, even though they are the lowest bidder and giving pause initially, looking at the fact that they provided twelve references, um, from around the area is encouraging. Who put this together, by the way, is this Christine?
Christine did the original one, I think.
They actually had the most references.
Yeah, so BBD had the most references. If we were to stick with them for a year and stick on their contract, see what we do, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So I'm in, I'm in a dilemma because I'm a little concerned about BBD not really recognizing the scope of what they have to take on. I know they're responding on paper to us, but the difference between three proposals, what one is substantially lower. Gives me cause, cause concern. We think about proposals we get on construction jobs, we, we, we'll submit some flags for us. I think about our cleaning contract. And it, you can get proposals and they're not necessarily able to be delivered on. So I was really not a fan of BBD as, as being the way forward. I could go with either the other two. I actually think Barbequain with more professional response. Although I hear the argument around, you know, sometimes it's good to change because that's something where you can get some different perspectives on things that have been ingrained as the way to do things. So that's why I am open to it. I do think that actually having a problem can really make somebody be sharper about what they're doing. So I think Barbequain is probably very acutely aware of making sure they do the best job and, you know, send letters to people who don't read them and this kind of thing. So, you know, it's like the plane crash where they investigated and made that safe plane to fly on again because they've looked into what the problem was, hence the, so. So we've got kind of all over, difficult over the place at the moment. So I'm happy to hear what people would, someone wants to make a motion and see if we get the voters.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, award the contract to BBD.
Okay, John, it's a second.
I'll second.
Okay, then, give your motion second, I don't hear the board comments or questions. Any public comments or questions on the proposal, Doug?
Thanks for really considering this. While it's good to consider a new auditing firm or, um, it, it could run into expense problems because they may add hours learning the new system, it could get somewhat expensive. As long, and, uh, I, I would, I would agree with Barbie, um, Barbequain, as long as they were really fault or recognized what happened, it's always no malfeasance would come at Kennedy. Barbequain knows our system, they have a long history here. My dad worked with them, Anthony, he was, well, my dad, he looked at the numbers like you wouldn't believe, they're. But any, but it's always good to have, you know, what, what order you can go with, so. I would, I would favor Barbequain.
Yeah, it is a good point, you know, this is not, this is really a contract that is not to exceed. It's based on proposals where the work required what we built to us. So if we're asking for things, they've underestimated it, we will get high bills as long as it's done. It's not enough to exceed contract, it would be, this is the estimate of work we're trying to do.
That's what they do.
Yeah, that's what they do, so, Doug's point, unless you're gonna get the savings, if we get the savings. I like Barbequain, but I can understand if we decide that actual waters, the way it's, it's a motion.
Well, Chris said he had one complaint regarding customer service and time because that's why it's out of line.
Well, that's, that's why.
Yeah, I, I didn't know.
Read the lines today.
Take that back.
Anyway, so any other public comments or questions, Steve?
Yeah, I would agree with what, what John made, I think, I think you can analyze them, probably a little bit. And I think that's what we're just focusing on. I mean, certainly, that's what you want out, you want out to find, different bids, and you got, um, they've met, I think, at least the minimum standard of what you're looking for. And, um, I think they deserve a chance, whether you make it a year, two years, and you can decide that too.
Who's that, Steve?
And that gives them a chance to evaluate what they spend on the way you are on this lot.
You're talking about BBDs, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, any other comments on the motion?
Well, I just had a question on this, the responsibilities list, where each company, um, lists what they'll do? They all say, um, issuance of a management recommendation letter. And I think that's standard, and I know I've asked for that in the past, and township keeps telling me that Barbequain's never issued one. So why their responsibilities, they say they're gonna issue one, but they.
So management responsibility letter is just a clarification of what management is doing in township. It's always in the report and what I think, like you're thinking on the IT is, the management letter that says there's a problem here and, you know, these are the issues that we found. If it's a terminology issue, I think it took about us coming the, the audit was presenting.
It's part of the, it's in the, it's within the audit, it's not a separate.
It's not a separate letter, it's just a statement within the audit.
I'm just curious why, also why Actra, which I thought they sounded good, but, um, why they didn't list Chester County, I just looked at Chester County's audit reports, CAFR, and Chester County uses them, so.
The county uses Actra?
They, they do a lot of county work, they wasn't like, called it county.
Well, I'm wondering, just, I don't know if it's fair to just look at how many references they put out there? Because there's a free, usually the standard number of references you would just.
Imagine if I call them references? Yeah, Kristen, yeah, that's, that's important, it's not the number, it's calling them and actually checking how were they? Did they do a great job, were they responsive, did they stick to the proposal?
There we go, sounds, you know, lead to the response that we got. Everything's okay, so no complaints about it.
Yeah, I believe Chris did a random, random sampling of those references. And he already did, like Sean said, a negative on Actra.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any other final board thoughts, otherwise we'll take the vote. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 So four ayes. Okay, all those opposed say nay, nay.
Nay.
So the motion passes four, one with Walsh opposed.
Yeah, that was a very long three two as well.
Huh?
Three two, yeah.
Three two, it'll.
What did you, what did you vote?
Okay, okay, so motion passes three two with Robin and me opposed.
That's with the qualification, it's not going to be a one-year contract?
Yes.
So I do think you should give Christine the benefit of an opportunity to speak to her about this, or her to continue with her decision-making.
Well, I believe she's been involved in this whole process, you know, from the.
We asked her specifically to say, so that we rely on the three bidders, and she said, I support this decision, so.
Sean, Sean?
Yeah?
Just a quick question, would this compromise our relationship with Barbequain and should we ever really go back to them?
No, it's, it hasn't, my.
That is bad.
It's worth eighty thousand dollars a year, you know, for them at least.
So, did you ever want to go back to this one deal?
And the sewer authority has to tell me.
It's business, yeah.
We know they're not that good.
If they don't, then we're bad.
All right. Okay, so moving on, we're on to agenda item number thirteen. Discussion possible approval of proposal for wayfinding signage for the West Ocean Township Police Department in the municipal complex. This was with Chris, Jamie, you wanted us to headline this for us?
So before the board this evening, um, is the consideration for proposal for the installation of wayfinding signage for the municipal complex, for the police department specifically. The proposal is from the sign shop. The signage is in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars. And the proposal is for, to install an illuminated signage. The, um, there's attached, uh, diagrams of what it would look like. So in speaking with the woodwork, the goal of the installation, the public infrastructure, the goal of the installation is to have better signage for the police department, particularly at nighttime. So the illumination is important. The current signage is also slightly hidden by the tree canopy and to the greatest extent possible. We've, you know, tried to, um, ameliorate that, uh, but at nighttime, it is still difficult to see the current letters on the police building. So the signage would eliminate and provide greater visibility. If the board does decide to approve this proposal, there are sufficient funds in the twenty twenty-two budget in the repairs and maintenance, um, general fund. If the board does decide to approve this proposal, there are sufficient funds in the twenty twenty-two budget in the repairs and needs general fund. Any questions?
So it's eight, it's eight thousand five hundred just for the sign, and we've got to be a little install one, is that?
We'll do the, we'll do the base, and then we'll have, I shouldn't just connect it, we're, there's already a, there's already a drop box out there, okay, too.
Why is it not vertical, it's horizontal?
Why is it hori-, why is it vertical and not horizontal?
Yeah.
And why is it a hole?
I mean, it just seems.
Oh, the letters?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, please go to, definitely read this versus this one.
I said the same.
Did you really? I thought it was.
But, and we'll, we'll confirm.
I thought we could change that.
Yeah.
It can't be on a podium, like a podium or something to make it go this way?
I agree. Well, the, the letters could just go down.
They need to go to the lineages.
Oh, yeah. No, you're putting them on the wall this way?
This is why it's not look.
It's stated, it's stated vertically, and it's sideways.
Yeah.
This is the version with PD likely, I'm, I'm gonna reconfirm before we order it.
Yeah, I would reconfirm.
Can we get a, any plan of it on one that's this way?
Uh, no, we, we actually looked at mounting one on the building, but it was considerably more expensive.
Really?
The freestanding signs actually gives you the best visibility everybody thinks as you come into the complex, because you'll have it actually on three sides.
And it would be right there where it's in the picture?
Yep, right in the, just off, in the packet's end, just to the right of the building.
Yeah, we can have something just that across, maybe a footing or something.
Well, because of the size, this thing's eighty-four inches, that's pretty big, so.
Well, there's no doubt it's visible, you're gonna know what the police building is.
And that's the, that's the key, just right now, we get many people pull in here, they wind up around back.
Yeah.
They.
I can see that.
You know, if you're coming here in the middle of the night to the police station, you're not necessarily the best of luck.
No, that's why it should be left to right. It's gonna be a wraparound soon. So right.
The chief's okay with this, or? Chief's okay with this?
Yes.
The chief in cap business is something.
Maybe you should relay our comments.
Well.
The package does not, wasn't approved, if you're not happy with that package, you need to give them a no.
For, for the space, the vertical works, but I said just turn the letters and make it, you know, I like, but this is what the design was, and everybody seemed to like it, but I'll, I'll reconfirm it with them before we go.
Yeah, are there other designs out there?
Yeah, can we do a horizontal one? That's not mounted on that?
Well, horizontally, you're gonna take up too much space, because it's, yeah, it's seven feet wide, well, you want it.
I mean.
You want it very visible, very readily recognized.
I'm wondering if we should put one out on the street.
That's the, we need a great visibility, nobody can find, when you pull in here, you're very confused, and nobody can figure out that that's the police building. Uh, you know, we have the chrome letters on the building, which, nobody can see it.
Maybe we could, maybe we could get a couple of options.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, some other design option.
And, and if I get, yes, Lucky Sign Shop, have you had experience with them in the past, would you?
Was that?
Lucky Sign Shop, have you had experience with them in the past?
That too does, uh, they do all graphics on the police cars, uh, they, they do a lot of work.
Tried any of the quotes?
Yeah, we've, we've been through, uh, the sign company that worked out there, they were, they wanted the, the building mounted signs, uh, we've looked at a couple, this has been a ongoing thing. We've looked at putting decals on the windows, and PD really liked this idea.
I speak design, yeah, it's needed, definitely.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, what is on?
Well, well, we're here, and you've been through a lot of effort, chief's okay with this, one last question for him, could he, could we, could you do it with the, the letters vertical, or would that be a better design? Can we just ask him that?
Yeah.
Okay, and if we can do that for the same price, would that be okay with the board?
Yeah.
Still.
Still on a call?
Still on a call, but we'll just change the, the direction of the letters.
Holy, yeah.
Yes.
All right. Do you think they'll be able to do that at the sign company, I can't see why not, it's just a little bit right.
I, I think that's it.
Okay, so.
That's a good comment.
So I'll make a motion to approve the installation of a full mounted police sign with the letters vertical if the chief agrees for eighty-five hundred dollars, is it a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so any public comment? Steve?
I would get a mockup of that made by Lucky Sign to see which, whether you like it versus having the letters.
You're, you're right, because it made it look a little weird, right?
Made it look a little weird.
Yeah.
So I'd get a mockup of that, I mean, spend the money, but I would get a mockup of both, and then.
So subject to the chief's approval, we've already said that as part of the motion, you can decide which way you want it, okay? Well, what, are you okay with that?
I said.
All right, so that's what the motion is, any other public comment or questions? All right, ready to take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes five zero. Next is agenda item number fourteen, discussion regarding a traffic study completed on North New Street, possible approval of resolution number twenty, twenty twenty-two, modify the speed limit on North New Street. Let's see, is this with the board?
You know what, Chris?
So, just, it's pretty straightforward, the, before the board is resolution number twenty, the North New Street, the traffic study completed by the Township Police Department, Traffic Safety Division. The area question is between three twenty-two bypass down to Sunset Hollow Road, the current posted speed on this road is twenty-five miles an hour at North New Street. It was reduced to that several years ago, in speaking with the sergeant, uh, Traffic Safety Division Brian Greaser, this reduction has created issues for the police department, including notice not applying the posted speed limit, road rage incidents, and complaints of speeding, so, because of the twenty-five mile an hour posted. Sergeant Greaser has indicated the police department was not, did not have accident issues or violent complaints when the posted speed limit was previous thirty-five miles per hour, which is what is being proposed to, for this, uh, resolution. Rick is in favor, and Captain D'Amidio is reviewed also in favor of making this change back. Are there any questions from the board?
Well, let, let me ask you a question, uh, when was it reduced to twenty-five mile an hour and why?
I don't know, five years ago, four years ago?
Uh, no.
Less than that?
No, I think it was seven or eight.
Okay, seven or eight years ago. It was reduced to twenty-five because there were concerns with safety on the roadway, because people were perceived to be speeding and at an excessive rate, which was felt to be unsafe. So at that time, the, the board decided to change it to twenty-five based on the residence district exception in the vehicle code, which allows posting twenty-five miles per hour in residence district is defined in the vehicle code without a traffic study. So that was done, and subsequently, we have problems as enumerated by the police department. The speed study was done by the police department, eighty-fifth percentile speed was found to be thirty-seven, and that regulation states you should post the road for plus or minus five miles an hour of the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which would indicate posting to thirty-five miles an hour. So based on the speed study, based on the problems we've had, the recommendation is to change the posting back to thirty-five.
Next, Rick, is a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two. Actually, it's made the motion, I'll second the motion, any other board comments or questions? Any public comments, Margie, it's your neighborhood, no, no questions?
No, that's a nice change. This is a possibility, we've got twenty-five on this.
It's, it's going down that way, it's a bit difficult. Okay, so ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, the motion passes five zero. Agenda item number fifteen is discussion of possible approval of Charles Creighton as an alternate member to the pension committee. So, uh, as you know, we, we have a pension committee in the township, and we have some members of the pension committee, the, there's all the pension committee members are renewed every year, it's just a one year term. We have several members of the pen, a couple of members of the pension committee have indicated that, that at some point, they're looking to potentially ease off being a member, and therefore, we were looking to see the other residents in the township who would be interested in, uh, being a, a member in the, either now or in the future. And, uh, through, uh, contacts with people who are on the committee, they, they brought forth, uh, Mr. Creighton, Charles Creighton. He is currently in the investment business, his little bio was provided to the board in the packet, and at this point, uh, he did attend the pension committee meeting last week, and has volunteered to help the committee in its current effort to evaluate the RFP responses for investment advisor, and is willing to serve, and subject to his appointment as a, currently as an alternate member, because we have the five members in place as of the, the current time, so. Before the board tonight is just to appoint Mr. Creighton as alternate member to the West Coast Township Pension Committee, um, and his appointment would then be, he could be reviewed again in January, while the, while the members. Any questions the board has? Any public questions? I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Creighton as an alternate member to the West Coast Township Pension Committee, is it a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. If I have chance of questions or comments, anyone, ready to take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved, all opposed, say nay, the motion passes five zero. Next is agenda item number sixteen, approval of the board's supervisory meeting minutes from October the third, twenty twenty-two. Any admissions or corrections that you threw away to the minutes?
I'm making a motion, John.
Thank you, give us a second.
Second.
I will not be voting, because I was not present at this meeting, so I'll abstain from voting, is there any public comment or questions? All right, ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes four zero. Last on the agenda is item number seventeen, approval of the bills to be paid for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. Is there a motion to approve the bills to be paid from these funds? Thank you, Margie, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments from the board on the bills to be paid? No, okay, any public comments or questions? Now, ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes five zero, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make it easier.
Your motion, you being second?
She banked it the whole time that you were going.
She, she's very divisive, but she's also very involved in that.
Okay, all, all in favor of, of adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.